All right. It is 6:30 on May 12th. The City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed below, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.086. The City Council reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. All matters listed below shall be eligible for both discussion and action unless otherwise specifically noted. It is 6:30, and we are in session. Called to order with a full dais. Councilmember Jackson is joining us over the -- are we using "go-to" meeting? Is that what we're using now? He's with us with "go-to" meeting, and we appreciate seeing him tonight. That beard's coming in good, Councilmember Jackson. It's nice to see you.
Why do you?
With that, we have the honor of Judge Chris Dugan in our chambers tonight, and Judge Dugan has agreed to lead us in the pledges. If everyone will please rise.
(Inaudible)
Councilmember Peterson will be doing our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. God bless -- please bless this council so that we may make good decisions for the city and for its citizens. I want to just say a prayer out to all the first responders and thank God for all our health workers. We just want to keep the sick in our prayers, and please bless all the mothers that just had their last Mother's Day. Excuse me, but please bless us and remember that we're all in this together and must remain together. And be kind to one another, because you can tell when someone is smiling behind that mask or not. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. May all be seated. So we're doing something tonight that, quite frankly, a lot of towns are not doing. Prior to all of the COVID, we were able to cancel our election because the two offices that were up had no opponent. And since there was no opponent, then we didn't have to have the election, which made our CFO happy, because that was money that was budgeted for an election that we didn't have to spend. And all of that happened right at the same time that COVID started, and money is a scarce commodity for all of us as we try to work through our budget. So we're moving to the top of page two, and Lyle and I will be taking the oath of office, and I will be going first. And Judge Dugan has agreed to swear me in tonight. As he's putting on his robe, I want you guys to know, this is a Bible that was given to my mom in 1949 by her grandfather. So special Bible to me, and particularly Councilmember Peterson, since you've mentioned moms. I lost my mom in 1991 on Mother's Day, so it's a way of having her with us tonight. So.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Connie Schrader.
I, Connie Schrader.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the city of Bastrop.
Of the city of Bastrop.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Virtual hug. I think the mayor and Councilmember Nelson would agree, there's only two ways to run for office, scared and unopposed.
Yes, correct.
I have those much better.
Yes.
Sox fan, had to go with my Astro face mask today, so we appreciate it once again.
You'll raise your right hand, Councilmember. Repeat after me. I, Lyle Nelson.
I, Lyle Nelson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Place three.
Place three.
Of the city of Bastrop.
City of Bastrop.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best.
Will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You get a virtual hug, too. And handshake.
For those of you at home, Judge Dugan's -- we're all sanitizing our hands between touching the pen and touching the paper, and so he's getting things all taken care of and signing So I personally want to extend heartfelt thanks to Judge Dugan for coming tonight. He has been a wonderful supporter and mentor for me for three years, and really means a lot for you to be here tonight. So let's give Judge Dugan a round of applause.
(Inaudible) for Dugan, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, and the rest of the council who are here to great job. Thank you as a Bastropian. I appreciate the job I'm charging for you very, very well. Congratulations, Jahl.
Thank you so much. Have a safe evening. There's some bad weather out there, so you keep yourself safe.
Good day.
All right, Council, we're going to move on to the next item, and that is, per our charter, whenever we swear in new council members, we have to have an election of a mayor pro tem. I am happy to entertain any nominations.
Mayor, it would be my honor and privilege to ask that Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson continue to do an excellent job.
Second.
I have a nomination by Councilmember Peterson and a second by Councilmember Ennis. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, that's a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll. I didn't know if -- I think Alan was saying, "Lyle, you can say no." All right. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
I think. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
I'm going to abstain.
So many of you, particularly those of you on council, recognize the hard work that Lyle has done over the last year, and actually over the last two years, as Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. And one of the times that I appreciated him the most was I was with my son in Austin at the oncologist, and he got an entire 25 minutes notice that he would be presenting at the Chamber Luncheon. And he was -- he didn't miss a beat. I understand you're where you need to be, and I will take care of that for you. He represents this town on CAPCO and does just an enormous amount of work and has been a really strong asset for this community, and I would like to have a round of applause for Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. All right. With that, we will be moving on to the mayor's report, and there are so many celebrations that we're postponing. I am anxious for the day that we're all able to get together, and we will just add this to the things that we'll be celebrating when we're able to do that sort of thing together again. So we are on item 6A, the mayor's report, and I have quite a few things, but I promise to try to go through them quickly. One of the first things I'm going to share is, and I'm not sure if Colin may say they can't see it at home, or he may have gotten it in, but we had a picture taken last Friday, and it was of the joint EOC and the people who have staffed that. Colin's looking frantic. He's doing what he can.
(Inaudible).
Oh, you had that on 11:00. Okay. You'll get to see that picture later. Sorry about that. So our first item is a proclamation that I want to give a shout out to a resident that is such an asset to this community, Herb Goldsmith. And while we talk about COVID, I want to -- I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, but I wanted to read just a few parts of it. Whereas through this complex and challenging time combating the Corona pandemic, the citizens of Bastrop have experienced many tests and trials. Whereas stress and worry over health and safety of family and friends, forced isolation, and financial distress can all result in anxiety, depression, substance misuse and abuse, and tragically even suicide. Whereas the citizens of Bastrop are encouraged to increase their understanding of mental health conditions so that they can reduce the stigma, thus increasing our community's openness to seek resources. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May as the month of mental health awareness in Bastrop, Texas. I want to thank Mr. Goldsmith for bringing this to my attention. It is a very stressful time for a lot of people in a lot of different ways. And often when we speak of resources, we think about gloves and hand sanitizer, and mental health resources is a vital, vital resource, and we just want to encourage folks to utilize that resource. So thank you, Mr. Goldsmith, for that. I also got a really cool email. Dr. Darty at the Circa School, she asked me for a letter of recommendation several months ago, and she was chosen as the 2020 Outstanding Teacher of Humanities. Let's give Dr. Darty a round of applause. She is just a fantastic teacher over at Circa. Bastrop County is working on their parks and open space master plan, and their survey is online, and it is available through Friday, and they are trying to get as much community input as they can. So if you haven't already, please participate in that survey. I'm sure that the county is interested if anyone would like to have a dog park, a larger dog park somewhere in the county. Now would be a really great time to share that information. Last Thursday, I participated in the National Day of Prayer. Judge Poppy okayed that event to happen at the county courthouse gazebo, and we did social distancing, and I think some of that was shown on Facebook, so I appreciated being a part of that. And the next proclamation that I have is about public works. And I want to read just a really quick one, part of this. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Bastrop, Texas. Whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Bastrop to gain knowledge of and to remain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd as National Public Works Week. At the time of the pandemic, can you think of anything worse than not being able to drink the water, not being able to flush the toilet, not being able to drive down the road to get to a doctor? Our public works folks have not missed a beat, and let's give them a round of applause. Part of our public works and part of the critical facilities that we provide is the library. And later this evening, Council, you'll have an opportunity to confirm an emergency order that I signed that allowed on Monday, May 4th, that the library started its curbside service. And I got an email by Friday, May 8th, and they had had 63 unique users check out 176 items, and we announced that Monday morning. And so that took place in that week, and I just want hats off to Becca Sexton, our librarian, and her entire team. They have really got a great system worked out, so I wanted to let you know about that. And I also have some information from our Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. They were recognized by the Institute of Local Self-Reliance for their COVID pandemic grants. So that was a really neat recognition that they didn't apply for and weren't aware of, so they're getting some state and national recognition. They were also a part of helping host the Workforce Commission's virtual job fair, and at the virtual job fair, 775 people attended and generated 71,695 booth visits. So it was a -- and I would profess to say that six months ago, no one had ever even contemplated a virtual job fair. So I think that was amazing. Didn't know if you guys were aware of that and wanted to share that. On Monday, the second round of COVID grants were approved by the EDC Board, and that second round had 109 projects, and they distributed $215,000. That was approved on Monday, and I'm sure our CFO and her staff are working to get that money out like they did in the first round. And for those of you that are keeping track of the numbers, that means that our Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Board has approved $400,000 to 171 projects in the last four weeks. During the first round, projects were approved on Monday, and Tracy and her team had the money electronically transferred and in people's bank accounts by Thursday. So that is really giving back to the community, and I wanted to thank the EDC staff and board for that. Then I also had -- I promise I'm almost done. Chief Nagy has agreed to serve as our representative on the Law Enforcement Education Committee of CAPCO, and so he will be representing us, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for agreeing to do that. And I have a proclamation for our law enforcement. Friday is the day that we would have normally had the memorial for the peace officers, and you will notice on Friday that the flags will be at half-staff, and they will be flying at half-staff to honor all of the fallen peace officers and their families. So if you happen to be driving and you see that, or if you see that on Facebook, you might just take a moment to remember those folks who have given the ultimate sacrifice and the families involved in that. Whereas citizens of Bastrop gather to recognize and honor our law enforcement officers for their faithful service and sacrifice while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bastrop Police Force. Whereas the names of the dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, the U.S. flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 10th through the 17th as Police Officer Week in Bastrop, Texas. Let's give our police officers a round of applause. They were going to have a little more news about police officers, but that's not my news to share. And that is the end of my mayor's report. Councilmember Jackson, do you have anything that you would like to share as a council member report?
Well, I'd just like to say that I have been kind of enjoying my isolation for a while. It's given me a chance to catch up on several projects. This coronavirus situation has really made all of us do a lot of things a little bit differently. Two things to report. Mayor, we're going to be serving on Friday at a civic forum with the Colorado River Collegiate Academy, and we're both panelists with some people from throughout the county, and that's something I'm looking forward to, to talk about city government. And my good news is that I was tested last week for the coronavirus, and just a few minutes ago, before the meeting started, I got a phone call and text letting me know that I was negative. So I'm glad for that.
Congratulations.
That's all I have to say for now, except that everyone stay safe and continue to practice social distancing and all the things you can so that we can be safe, so we can all be back together again someday.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Ennis?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, first of all, I want to formally thank Council for recognizing me as Mayor Pro Tem. I really appreciate y'all's faith and confidence. The second thing is, last week, we celebrated the 75th anniversary of Victory in Europe Day, and I think that's a perfect indicator of what can happen when people work together. It was a trying time, but it came out with a level of success that's led toward the continued freedoms we enjoy today. And lastly, I want to remind everybody that the census is still going on, that our county is fairly low. I believe it's under 50% as far as participation in the census, and we really need to step up to the plate, because this is going to have a dramatic impact on our funding and representation in Washington as well as at the state capitol. So that's it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Rogers?
I just want to say that I'm glad that both of you are still sitting up here on the dais with us.
Oh, thank you. That's everything. That's everything. Councilmember Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor Nelson, tonight.
All right. With that, we are moving on to item 6C for the city manager's report. Mr. Wood?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Have a few items I want to go over with you, just to keep you updated. The first one is the budget, and I gave these numbers to Council recently, but just as a reminder, and for anyone else that's watching, the sales tax from March of 2020, we just learned, was up about 11% compared to March of 2019. So instead of a reduction, which we expected, it actually went up a pretty significant amount, and so we'll keep an eye on those numbers going forward. The expectation is that, you know, April might be the most difficult month, and so we will find out in June, the first or second week of June, we'll find out what those numbers are, and we'll definitely keep you up to date with that. We have started having -- I say "we," I should specify who that is. CFO Tracy Waldron and myself have started meeting with the department directors. Assistant City Manager Trey Jobe is also involved with that. We'll be working with the department directors on the budgets for their departments that they just turned in this week. So that's kind of really started the ball-rolling for the budget process. So we will keep meeting with them and start working on the individual budgets and also working them into a full city budget that will eventually come here before Council. Mayor, were you going to talk at all about the CARES Act?
Yes.
Okay.
When I get to 11:00.
I'll let you -- yeah, I'll let you handle that then.
Thank you.
All right. So as Mayor Pro Tem just mentioned, I had an item on here to talk a little bit about the census. You're correct, the number I saw was just under 50%. And more specifically, if you look at the city of Bastrop, the households on the south side of Highway 71 have responded at about a 61% to 67% rate. It's broken up a little bit, but it's in that range. On the north side of 71, where we are right now, the response has been about a 49% rate. And so we -- Assistant City Manager Trey Jobe and I looked at that, or have talked about it a little bit. Becca Sexton, our library director, has been attending some of the meetings. Trey's going to start joining her in those meetings. And one of the things we've talked about is we're going to get together and come up with some ideas to try to get the word out a little bit more in both areas, but maybe some way even focus a little bit more on the north side, since that seems like where we're having the lower response. And so you may hear from us at some point in the near future, and that could be anything from signs or messages on the utility bill, any way that we can get the word out to people to get them to start to participate, because it, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, it's really important for state and federal funding that we get everybody counted and get those numbers correct. The -- I think I reported this to Council also, but again, just for anyone else that doesn't get all of that information, the emergency management vehicle and the Fire Department Command vehicles have both arrived. Those are getting put into service as soon as possible, and those are both going to improve the city's ability to respond to emergencies and different situations that happen here in the city. It's also hoped that with newer vehicles, it'll help us save some money on maintenance and fuel costs. So we're looking forward to getting those both into service. Mayor, I've got a couple of items that are related to the COVID-19 issue, and if you don't mind, I'll hold those until.
Sure.
Until we get to your item.
Okay.
Or to that update item. Mayor Schrader mentioned that about the public works issue, last week was officially Public Service Week, or Public Service Recognition Week, and we have some -- there we go. Colin's got some pictures for us on the screen. This is some work that Main Street Director.
That picture was last year, not during COVID.
Exactly. I was going to mention it. I was going to mention it. If anybody saw that on Facebook, it immediately came up that no one was wearing a mask, and I think Rebecca and Colin and everyone involved had tried to head that off with the date on there, but obviously not everyone read the fine print.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was last year. We didn't do anything last week because of the COVID situation, and so that's an old picture. Here's some other pictures, also not from the time during the COVID-19. Some other pictures that they used just to let people see, by putting those on social media, let people see what the various public servants do that work for the city, and just kind of give everyone an idea of the different activities that the city employees are involved in to help make the community a better place to live. The last item I'm going to mention, and I think this is something the mayor referred to earlier about an upcoming police item, Officer Charles Sanford. Most people actually know him as Officer Monty. He's quite well-known around the community, has been chosen as a recipient of the 100 Club Central Texas Guardian Angel Award. So he's one of seven first responders in the central Texas area to receive this award. He's been chosen, I'm not sure if he's actually officially received it, just like everything else.
I think not yet.
The pandemic issues are making that difficult. That's typically done at the banquet, annual banquet for the 100 Club, and they've canceled the banquet, so they're doing it a little bit differently in kind of recognizing people. Each week, they recognize one of the people. Each week, they recognize one of the people. And so he hasn't quite gotten to his turn yet. If anyone's not familiar with the 100 Club of Central Texas, they provide some financial support to families of any first responders who have been injured, critically injured, or actually lost their lives in service. And so that's what they were started to do. And then they also have some awards that they give out to try to recognize first responders. He was chosen again amongst first responders from all of central Texas. There were seven of these awards given out this year. And we will, it's done for a specific act or a specific task that they performed. And so we'll find out, we'll talk more about it and go into more detail about it when he's actually here and everyone here can recognize him for what he's done.
Let's have a round of applause for Officer Sanford.
If you haven't met Officer Sanford, and I hadn't until about a week ago, he's a really dynamic, outgoing officer. Most of you probably know him.
Mr. Wood, we've all met.
That's what I thought. Well, I was shocked when the information went up on Facebook that he had won the award. Within a couple of hours, there were 180 comments, I think, on there. And every person on there was saying, "I met him at the gas station," or "I met him over here." And so he seems like a great representative for the police department. And we'll learn more about what he did when he comes in to see us.
He is not shy at all, and does so much with the schools. Great job. Councilmember Rogers?
I was just going to say, you, both of you have touched on the census. Is, what's the deadline? And first, I have done it, just so, but just so the public knows, what's the deadline? Do we know?
I haven't done mine. Trey, did you have a deadline?
I think it's through the end of June.
Okay. I was just curious. I mean, we've made so many comments to the public.
It's not within a couple of days or anything. It's, there's still a little bit of time left, but that's why we're going to start ramping up.
Okay. Since you mentioned it so much to the public, I was hoping.
And we're going to get the word out on Facebook and Twitter and everywhere else to let people know when their deadline is and try to encourage them to sign.
Trey's probably Googling it now, and poor Becca Sexton's at home going, "I know, I've told them." So we'll make sure that, that's a great question.
And it's been, it's been on the social media, which is why I should remember, because I've seen the, I've seen the announcements, I just don't remember the date.
And it's easy to do. I've done it online as well.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
I was just going to say, I've been talking to people, and I offered my computer, "Come over to the house and get it done." It only takes about five minutes to just come by and get it done.
Absolutely.
Everyone should have received, I should have said this earlier, they should have received a packet in the mail. And you can fill that out and send it back in, or you can go online to do it.
Or you can call.
If those don't work, right.
Because there's a number that you can call if you're having issues. So yes, we need, so I was waiting for Mayor Protem Nelson to chime in and brag on Hunter's Crossing have a much higher response rate than some of the other neighborhoods in throwing down the challenge, but he did not do that.
Humility is always the best.
So yes, we need to get everyone to respond. Everybody needs to be counted.
Okay. Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Wood?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the next item, which is an update on the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Jobe, I think you have some pictures and overview. Am I right?
I do. Mayor, I'd like it on the record that I'll be stepping away from the dais for the discussion of South Main.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, I texted Tony B. as well, so that he can dial in. But we can go through the pictures and we can discuss, I mean, as we go. I know one of the big discussions that we've had, well, let me start with saying, the project is anywhere from 40% to 45% complete.
Okay, that's a good deal.
All right. We're currently within budget. And we're on schedule to be completed with this section, and I say this section, with the most intense areas within the next three to four weeks, except for a couple of sections that we have left out that we're still working with property owners.
Okay. But everyone at home has just said, "I don't know the streets of the most intense sections."
So from farm?
So are you like from spring or from farm or?
So from farm to Pine.
Pine, okay.
And Tony, you can help me out here. There he is.
Hi, Tony.
We're talking completion from farm to pine within, I would say, the next three to five weeks. And then the majority of the work will be done at the end, and we should still be completed by August. So anyway, project's on schedule, on budget, and somewhere around 45% complete. And then we can go through the pictures, and we can talk about the one here, and that's the stop bars. So we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation around the corners at the intersection of Main and Chestnut. So I thought it'd be something worth talking about. And as you can see in the pictures here, well, if I can back up, this is absolutely where the new stop bar will be located. You can see where it existing is, and this is an approximate area which will set people back. See if I can back this up just a little bit. And you can see a faraway picture and then a close-up, almost another 15 feet, which will make that radius much easier to turn for larger vehicles.
So a way to think about it is sometimes if a big, really like a smile's trying to make a turn, and people will back up to allow them.
For a fire truck.
So it's not quite that far, but that stop line is defined? The stop bar is defined, I believe, by the radius of that corner.
That's correct.
And the speed and the other things. And so some of the complaints that we had gotten was people were trying to make that turn, and I think since the last council meeting, you guys have put the center line actually in the new center. Is that completed?
It is in the center and at the intersections. You'll notice that it moves in other parts of the.
Based on the construction?
Based on construction, that's right. So it's not really a straight line. The street technically is not even straight, but there are, it does weave in and out.
When do we think we're going to be able to paint the new stop bars?
Well, I'd like, we're finished with this intersection.
You don't want to paint it and then cover it up and then paint it again, right?
Well, no, we don't. I think we can paint it temporarily. I've already spoken to Curtis about getting it painted, having this one blacked out. But we can back up, and let me show you this intersection again. Here's why it's really important. I just noticed this today while I was taking pictures and walking Main. If you can see this pickup truck, you see how he's already parked across the crosswalk when he should technically be back here in that 15 feet?
With the front of his car.
That would take care of the radius. And if you remember, why we put these corners on here was for another pedestrian, safer pedestrian enhancement, to make sure that people can congregate there, they can cross the street safely. It slows traffic. This is truly a traffic calming technique that works, because I guarantee it, when you're coming around this corner, you have to slow down and pay attention. And that's exactly what it was designed to do. I think there's options, and we want to make sure that everyone is happy before the contractor leaves. But the best thing that we can do is get this intersection painted up, try to let behavior, because everybody likes walking up and down Main Street, but it's a little tougher to drive and turn the corner now. But it just gives time to change behavior, to learn a little bit, to get used to it, to make sure people are safe. Because any pedestrian accident, I think, anywhere in the city is something we want to prevent. And that was the entire goal of making these bump outs the way they are. So we're going to go back, I think another fix, and I'm going to back up one more slide to the one that Colin's got on the screen, to share. We could also place signage here and make sure that people know this is where to stop, because you don't always pay attention to what's painted on the road. But we could place a sign there that says, "Stop Bar here, stop at this location," just to make sure we take care of it. And that's a really simple fix to help with it. But the main thing I'd like to do is give it time. So, because remember, we're still under construction. But I'll be glad to take questions throughout.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, I don't want to stir your thunder or get ahead of you, but I mean, there's got to be a second part to having that stop bar back so far. No turn on red? Is that what we're envisioning?
That's correct. You could, you would also, that's correct. You would not be able to turn right on red. There's, I suppose you could if there was no traffic, but I would suggest no right on red. That's one of the options we could do.
Well, with the stop bar back so far, there's obviously going to be creeping as people are going to try to move over to see around the, see around the corners.
Right. And I'm sure Clint is much better and knows a lot more about this than I do, but, sorry, Chief Nagy, sorry, Clint, chief. The point is, you should stop at the stop bar. If there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic, there's nothing wrong with inching your way and taking a cautious turn to the right. But that is certainly an option that we can explore.
Okay, but you said yes. So just so we're clear, you do not have plans to put up no right on red at this moment, because that's something that council would have to vote on to do, correct?
That's absolutely correct. So what I would say is, there's lots of options. We can put out and count traffic movements if we like. We can set cameras out there while we're counting the traffic movements, and we can see just how many people do hit the curb. Maybe there's 500 turns a day, and 10 of them hit the corner. Maybe it's not really a problem. So we can, we can do those kinds of things as we're working on the other end, once the three weeks from now, when that most intense and most dense section is complete, and really get a good study of them before the contractor leaves, make adjustments that are local and fit Bastrop.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I was going to ask the same question as Lyle asked about the no right on turn, because you're, if you're asking them to go that, I would just like that subject to be brought back to council, because asking them to stop and then allowing them to creep up is kind of seems like you're asking them to stop, but you can't really go, you know? It's kind of like a mixed message to me. The other curb that I was, I had a question about is the one that sticks out is the one at Pine, because that one's really, when you're coming off Pine Street and turning north on Main.
That one?
That one's, yeah. Because the other curb on the other side by the museum sticks out real far, too. I'm just not sure that one's, just want you to look at.
No, you're right. This is the exact same situation. Because that curb sticks out so far, and you can see how far the stop sign is away from the intersection, it forces you to stop.
Right.
Slow down, pay attention to the pedestrian, and then inch your way out. We clearly can't put a no right on red here, because there's no signal. But if there's no traffic, it's okay for somebody to stop at the stop bar and then inch their way up. That turn, and I also have a picture in the center there, that's the opposite side. So we had a, it looked exactly like, it still looks like this, is the picture I took today. My point is, the opposite side, turning north looked very similar. And what that did is, you still had to stop there and inch your way up, because the buildings were built on 90 degrees at that corner. If anything, it only slowed you more as you turned north. But you always had to stop really far back. Conditions haven't changed, because you can't see past the buildings, because the stop sign location hasn't moved.
I was just, I guess to my naked eye, the Main Street looked thinner there between the museum and Spoiled Sisters than it did at the intersection of Chestnut.
It is definitely thinner.
Somebody was watching, when I watched the big truck trying to turn.
It's thinner than it was, but it's the same dimension, isn't it?
That's what I was, that's what I wondered.
That's correct. It's, it is, the radius is the same. It was only paint before.
Okay.
Does that make any sense? And now it's curveline.
Okay. I was just curious, because I was going to say to my naked eye, it looked thinner, but I wasn't sure what it was.
What you have now is 10-foot drive, 10-foot traffic lanes, up and down that section.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
If a driver.
No one can hear you if you don't come to the mic, Chief Nagy.
Yeah, a good example of the stop sign and the crosswalk is Old Austin Highway near HEB and Hassler Boulevard. So that's kind of your stop. You have to make sure that you're going to be stopped at the crosswalk, and then you can start to creep forward. Then you have to yield right away to the, to all the traffic. So that's a good example.
And that's because there's that really wide sidewalk along, yeah. That's a, that's a good example. You should be nicer to him, Assistant City Manager. Councilmember Peterson, you were one of the people that, I memory particularly at Pine and Main, that there'd been, is this making sense? Do you have questions or comment? Want to put on the mic?
It makes great sense to me, but it's a hard sell. I've been working on some people that don't like it. And let them know, we are looking out for pedestrians on Main Street, and that's one of the key issues that we're looking at here.
So I can tell you, the majority of the discussions that we've had is, everybody hates it when you're under construction, right? But as they see the completed project, the business owners are loving what's there. The pedestrians, they all enjoy what's there. Short of just a few people that have contacted me, it's a little tough to turn the corner. I don't disagree. But we just, again, it's learned behavior, it's getting used to it. Just because it's different doesn't mean it's wrong. And I think that's the main thing we need to focus on, and then just give it time. And if we need to make changes, we'll do that before the contractor leaves.
But, and I believe one of the reasons, and Colin, I know we're making this hard on you, but I can't see Councilmember Jackson right now, and I want to make sure that if he has a comment or, Councilmember Jackson, I didn't know if you were waving and wanted to comment, so I wanted to make sure I gave you an opportunity to comment. But before I do that, one of the reasons that Tony's available is, it is my understanding that although, and Councilmember Rogers, I love thinner, some people would say narrower. You don't have as much room as you used to have, but those radiuses and the stop bars that all meets transportation engineering guidelines, correct, Tony?
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Jackson, did you have any questions for Tony or for Mr. Jobe?
No, I'd just like for you all to speak up, so I can hear you better, if you can.
Okay. He was talking to you, Trey.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I'll get as close as I can without licking the mic. So, Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to make a similar comment to yours about, about that it meets all of the traffic regulations and guidelines for the roads. The second issue is, is that this is a design, the radius and the way that the street's laid out is a design that has been used elsewhere. It's not something that was created just for Main Street and Chestnut, or Main Street and Pine. And so I think it's important to note that it's been used elsewhere successfully. And so, and that the reason for using it was to make cars slow down. And so I've gotten a couple of comments, too, about, "Well, I can't make that turn like I used to." Well, that was the idea. The idea was to require people to slow down to make that intersect, both of those intersections safer. And so it is, like Trey said, it's going to require people to change their behavior. A very simple item that some of you might not have seen yet, because I think it happened today, there's a cone on the corner. You have a picture of that, Trey?
I bet I do. Is that it?
Yes. So there's a cone, there's a cone right there on the corner of Chestnut and Main, the one that people have asked about, that's been out there, I think, since today. And it's kind of a minor issue, but it helps people see that something has changed. If you're used to making that turn, and you've done it 1,000 times, you might not notice that something's different, you run over the curb. And so there's a cone out there right now that will hopefully in the short term, get people to notice that something's different. And as Trey said, people get trained over time, and that's the issue now. They've been trained to take that corner at a certain speed. They're going to have to be retrained to take the corner, the corner at a slower speed.
I hear a whole bunch of, we need to hold our horses and not jump to a conclusion and give it some time. Councilmember Rogers?
I just thought maybe if Andreas could comment that how his fire truck can make the turn, then a duly should be able to make the turn. I mean, I know you drove your fire truck through when we had the pop-up, so, I mean, if you can drive it with a big old truck, then it should be able to, for anyone else.
Yeah, I should have gave the video, I gave the video to Trey. We actually filmed ourselves going around this turn. As long as people follow the stop bar and stop at the stop bar, the fire engine makes the turn with no issue.
Okay. That's what I was saying. I wanted your comment, because I mean, your fire truck's the biggest vehicle we have in town, so if you can do it.
Yeah, it's when they pull up and they stop too, too, you know, up too far, and Yeah, it's when they pull up and they stop too, you know, up too far, and the stop bar, it doesn't allow the swing of the truck. But we do have to have, you know, we do have to come out into the turn lane of Chestnut, so you'll have to swing into the turn lane to cut the corner. But we are able to make it and get down into Main Street, both directions. So, we actually drove all through there and filmed it and gave Trey. We asked for, I think, one small little thing. I think there was one place where I think maybe the, like, not the curb, but the gutter portion was up a little high, and we asked him to kinda get that shaved down. But other than that, as far as jumping curb, we were not on the curb at all.
Mayor Protem Nelson, thank you, Chief Rosales.
Yeah, not all of us drive fire trucks through downtown Bastrop, but I do drive my pickup truck, and I made that turn with no problem at all. One of our, I guess the transition is that we wanted to make our downtown more pedestrian-friendly.
Correct.
And if we make it more pedestrian-friendly, it's obvious we're going to have to exercise some sort of traffic calming methodologies to ensure that the pedestrians move out safely. So, I mean, that's the intent. It's not to make it inconvenient.
Yes.
For the motoring public, it's to make it safe for the pedestrian and still allow appropriate access.
Yeah, and you can, I'll get as close as I can, sorry. You can really find several studies online that talk about that. You can move just as much traffic, it's just.
Slower.
Yeah. It's calmer. Yeah.
Okay, so, council, it feels like we're at the, bars are moved back, center line's in the right place, got the cone to get people's attention, but I would ask city manager that we put this on the agenda in two more weeks because, to Councilmember Rogers' request, if we need to consider a no right turn on red, if there's other things we need to do, and also giving the community an opportunity to slow down and make the turn and see how they're doing, I don't want us to just be like, oh, we think it's okay, you know, let's make sure that we use it and revisit this.
Absolutely. I do want to point out a couple of other things in the pictures, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
If you'll look at the sidewalk here, advance a little bit, Colin, to where we were on Pine Street. But if you'll notice, the reason we widen these sidewalks is to maintain ADA compliance. And I just want to address that if we come and speak to you and we extend the sidewalk, this is just one example. Nobody's in trouble, but clearly, we've taken up all the ADA space and added an additional table. So, we will be mentioning that to our business owners as we move forward. There still needs to be an accessible route.
Because part of the pedestrian-friendly is that it's pedestrian-friendly for everyone. So, if you're in a wheelchair and you have to stop because there's tables in the way, that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do for our downtown.
That's correct. Now, you do have more space now for outside tables than you did, but we still can't clog up the accessible route. So, we'll be speaking to them as we go through. And again, it's just learning and behavior.
And what's the, is it four foot? What's the clearance that you have to maintain for ADA standards?
It's four foot every, it's every 20 feet, I believe. You can have four feet, you have to have 20 foot, but Tony, you need to chime in here, but you can have a, I believe it's four foot wide and then at 20 feet. Go ahead.
That's right, Trey. Four foot wide is the standard minimum. There are allowances for very short distances. If you're only a foot or a couple inches, you can go down to 32 inches. Just depends, but the standard is four foot for long runs with a five-foot opening at least every 200 feet.
Five-foot opening every 200 feet, okay.
Yes.
So, if you are between, say, Pine and Chestnut, and there's tables, if a restaurant wants to have tables, as long as there is a standard clear minimum of four foot clear, then everyone's in compliance?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, in case somebody's listening from home, so, but you would like, you envision that four foot being next to the retailer's door? So, I mean, you don't want one restaurant. So, I just want to know, so if people listening can tell whether they want, you want them to put their tables on the outside, see where, on that one picture?
Yeah, it can be one or the other, as long as there's four foot.
What she's asking you is, so, you're okay if the pedestrians have to zigzag as long as there's always four foot clear?
Right, I was gonna say, because if you have two restaurants.
Or are we saying, no, the four foot is from the face of the building?
Because I think it would be wise to make it, to say what the city would like, because if you have two restaurants, one could be put in here, and it would make it hard for that. So, which way would you guys like it to be? That's what I'm.
Well, and I think we can address that with each property owner, because not everybody has posts, not everybody, so it's gonna, the main goal here is a four-foot clear path.
Okay, you're missing the question. Because she's saying, do we have a preference that the four foot is always from the face of the building? Or, and Tony, is there, is it?
Or from the street.
We can do wherever we want? You want the four foot from the building face out or from the lip of gutter in?
The way that it's set up now is for the portion against the building is the ADA access, so that it goes under the awnings and has the covering, has access to the buildings, not the portion against the curb, because we want to keep pedestrians away from the vehicular traffic.
Okay. Really, really good question. And then that, from a restaurant standpoint, if they want to have a table in that area, you're seated, there's tables, and so, a car knows there's something going on instead of there's randomly pedestrians suddenly up against the lip, the face of the gutter?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I think we've talked about the corners quite a bit. Is there anything else we'd like to discuss?
Yes, we have a letter that was submitted on Item 7A from Lenny Adams. And council, you have a copy of that letter with a number of pictures that were taken. And Attorney Borquist, this is not an extremely long letter. Is it best to read it into the record because it was submitted this afternoon as a, if we were in a regular meeting, they would be making their comments. So, I'm wanting to read the, read three minutes worth. Is that the correct way to do this?
Yes, Mayor, I think the process we've set is to go ahead and read up to three minutes in lieu of live citizen comments. And the rest of the letter, if there's any remaining beyond the three minutes, will still be included as part of the record for today's meeting.
Okay. And council, so that the public knows, council has a copy of the letter and of all the pictures. So, this is regarding Item 7A. We have concerns with, and there's three bullet points. Use of field engineering for the southern portion of Main Street project, specifically Pine to Highway 71. Number two, absence of elevations, cross-sections, or drawings for oversight and approval. And number three, creating inaccessibility issues that would not meet TDLR approval. Currently, the Main Street rehabilitation project has added a great deal for pedestrian mobility to downtown commercial two blocks of Main Street, and has done so with care and attention to the accessibility of the historic buildings in regards to the existing thresholds and entries. Our concern is with the southern phase of this project. We have attached photos of a completed portion in the south end of Main Street in front of an existing commercial property. This project began the planning process with the city in 2015, was awarded a building permit for remodel and new construction of a planned development in 2017, and received the final certificate of occupancy in 2019. Less than one year later, the Main Street project has devalued the property as it is less than what it was, less accessible, less visible, less valuable to the owner, and thus less to the city tax base. We are certain this was not the intent of council with this project, and also certain you would not wish for it to continue forward with no knowledge to the adverse effects of the city's historic neighborhoods and properties. We understand the council's decision to move forward with the project with quote "field engineering" unquote in order to save costs. It is assumed this has shown to be beneficial for the completed blocks where little change was to occur except the widening of the sidewalks. However, the south end phase is being done with quote-unquote "standard" cross-sections along with the embankments of the Colorado River and a portion of Main Street that is far from quote-unquote "standard." We ask the council to pause the reschedule, to pause the scheduled construction for the south portion of Main Street, request elevation and cross-sections that are appropriate for this topography and site conditions. Also, we request the council to review the construction that has been completed, discuss the appropriate measures to correct the issue at hand by restoring the elevation of the sidewalk and curb to its original elevation. We must be certain of what effects this project will have on the neighborhood, a neighborhood this project was designed to enhance. Thank you for your time and consideration. Lenny Adams, Operations Manager, Baham Limited Interest LLC, Owner's Representative for Kazam Kansari. And there are pictures attached. So, for public that may not know exactly what we're talking about, it's around 702 Main Street. And I think it's 702, 704. I think there's a few addresses. Is that correct?
702 and 704.
Okay. So, do you have some pictures for us?
I do.
Okay.
Well, where would we like to start? I have several. We can go through them, and we can ask questions, we can address comments if needed in the letter. I know that's not something that's usually done, but I can help answer some of those questions. I do want to start by saying, the project's not completed. We actually stopped halfway. So, this is not what it will look like at the end, and I know they have concerns of the finished product. We haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. We were meeting, the first meeting I requested was April 3rd. We have yet to meet on-site until today to talk about some of the issues. And I think we can absolutely resolve them, and that's what I'd recommend. We just need to make sure that we all understand the issues. So, let's go through, and I think what field engineering does, because it is, it is not quote a term, but it's truly a, it's truly a technique that's used everywhere. And Tony, you can again chime into that, has found, allows us to be flexible. It saved us 25 to 30% on the overall job cost, and it allows us to take care and fix issues as we come along. So, if we can meet on-site with the property owner, that's exactly what this is intended to do.
So, some of the cost savings is, because if you did not do field engineering, you draw the standard straight line, and then you get out in the field and realize there's a tree in the middle of the sidewalk, and so, then you're, then the contractor says, but I bid a straight line, and now you want me to go around a tree. So, I, the reason I think that's important to clarify is that we're not getting engineering that's not done to standards. That's not the point of it at all. So, I just want to make that minor clarification.
Yeah, I want to make the point that this is, it is engineered while it's in the field. Your savings, a lot of it comes from survey work. Actually having to draw a set of plans, just like the mayor stated. But I also have a couple examples of other properties in here where we've made elevation changes where we could to make sure that we, so we weren't able to give you ADA compliant with these steps, for example. Clearly, we could not raise the sidewalk up over the top step. But we were able to meet it at the next entrance, which was also not an ADA compliant entrance. So, we've been doing that all the way down the street, so there's gonna be lots of different changes. You can see examples of, again, the grade change. Sorry, Colin, I'm trying to help you. Let me know if you need some help. I'll just say click out loud so you can move your, you can advance your slides. If you'll notice in some of these improvements here, there's quite a lip, there's no doubt. But it's now ADA compliant, where you see that black spot is where a tree is gonna go. There's several enhancements along there for making it walkable, making it safe. And if we can do something to enhance, and there, one of the main concerns on-site today was there was no entryway. And I think that's something we can remedy, and that's what I'd recommend to council. But as we keep going, we can ask more questions. Here's another example of a property on the corner of Chestnut and Abbey B. You can see it's about a six to eight-inch drop-off. We took care, this was actually something I worked on when I first got here. It was really, some sidewalk improvements were done. Everybody was concerned about the drop-off and somebody falling in. We put in a nice decorative rail. Ended up being almost like a little court. It handles all the drainage. It's a great example of drainage being handled behind the improvements.
So, that's the city railing that was put in?
It's actually the owner put that railing in.
Okay.
Yeah, because they wanted something much more decorative. But I think this is the same type of solution. I wonder who that was.
Councilmember Jackson, was that you?
No, I was clearing my throat, but I will have some comments on in a few minutes, but not now.
Okay.
So, my point is, as you look on the slide just before, so we gotta back up one, Colin, so I'll say click, but you see that there's drainage work behind the curb, which we have examples of downtown already. I think we can work with this property owner, just like we did in the past, to make it aesthetically pleasing, and I think that's how we move forward. So, we'll just keep going. Sorry, Colin. That's my last slide.
So.
With that, I'll take any questions.
Colin, can you go back one? The, there was a, it wasn't mentioned in the letter, but there has been conversations about the transformer. Tell me how much, tell me what you did and what you did not want to do to the transformer, please.
Okay, so, this, there's a long history. Again, you can see from, just to address some of the stuff in the letter, from 2015 to 2017, the original request to put the transformer would have required a PUE on-site property. The property owner at that time chose to put the transformer into the right-of-way, which is why we didn't get a license to encroach for two more years, which is why they didn't receive a CO. So, it wasn't because of this long planning process. We were building this as we went. Their CO was requested in 2018. You'll remember, we performed a license to encroach here at the city. All that had to be recorded, everything that was in the right-of-way, the improvements that were in the right-of-way, the lighting that was in the right-of-way. Once that was done, they received their CO. The transformer specifically would have been between those two buildings originally, but we would've had to accommodate that for the property owner. That was something they were interested in at that time. And if you'll notice, it's not that much higher than it was. All we did was elevate it, and you can see there's about a four-inch difference. That's how tall it was originally. And then we elevated it four inches just to meet the current grade.
So, when you say originally, you're saying before the Main Street project? Is that?
Before the Main Street project, that transformer was only four inches lower than it is today.
Okay. I didn't, okay.
If that helps.
And you're saying you wanted to put the transformer back on private property and it would require an easement, or the property, did the property owner want it there and we ask him to put it out in front? Or how did that?
The property.
Who usually decides where the transformer goes?
So, usually BPNL does that. And we will, we will say, hey, where would you like to put it? What's your location? How do you want it? And we work with the building plans.
Okay.
We suggested originally, I spoke to Curtis about this today, we suggested originally between the buildings. They had some decorative improvements and some stairways that they wanted to put in, so it didn't fit. So, it's not uncommon to have a transformer in the right-of-way, so we went ahead and moved it into the right-of-way. We allowed them to put parking and other improvements in the right-of-way as well. And all of that required a license to encroach, hence the extended timeline for not getting a CO.
So, that's stuff that's resolved during the site plan? I was never around, and I didn't, I didn't, did you build, did you put transformers in, Mr. Peterson? I never, I never did that. Okay. All right. So, it's negotiated during the site plan?
Correct.
And the overall agreement was to put it in the right-of-way and for it to be, if it's gonna be on private property, we need a public utility easement. If it's gonna be put in the right-of-way, they need to acknowledge that they are encroaching in the right-of-way because it's something for their building that is in public right-of-way?
That's correct.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Just a few questions because I'm a layman and don't understand a lot of this. What is TDLR?
TDLR?
Mm-hmm.
Tony, you want to chime in on this one? It has something to do with ADA compliance?
I'm sure. I just.
It's the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation.
Okay.
They're the ones that have and administer the Texas accessibility standards and set those standards, which are similar to ADA but not exactly ADA.
And part of the reason that I'm asking is, I want to make sure that we're able to address the assertions made in the letter to the satisfaction of all parties. And to that end, are the issues that are, that are set out here, are they generally recognized by all parties involved as well as resolution? Are we still trying to come up with a resolution? Or are there actually issues that require resolution?
I got lost.
Well, there's some assertions in here that there are issues that exist that won't meet certain standards. There's also assertions in here that the property, property has been devalued in some way, shape, or form. So, it's a real concern to the owner. I want to make sure we address those concerns. If there's real issues that are based upon drainage or other physical issues, are we gonna be able to address it, or is it just aesthetics? I don't think it's just aesthetics. I would like to make some sort of determination that there, that there are issues that are commonly recognized, and if there are resolutions of those issues. Was that a little bit clear?
Yes, sir. And I can tell you that we actually did resolve, so the existing sidewalk that was there was not compliant for ADA. We've also improved the drainage on-site. And in some conversations we had today on-site with the meeting, their engineers confirmed that, yes, we've addressed all of their drainage issues. But I think, again, we can, I think the majority of them are aesthetics now, and I'd suggest that's, we just work that out on-site to make sure we accommodate property owners. There are things that we can do to make it aesthetically pleasing and still meet ADA compliance. And it may just be the way that we build the handrails, for example, which is not a gigantic cost, if that makes any sense.
Well, it does to a certain extent, it, it
Doesn't mean you have to. I'm saying we have that option.
It, it addresses potential issues and not real issues, and the issues have not been cooperatively recognized so that they can be addressed in a cooperative manner. I mean, simple question, or is, are there any drainage issues that have been created by the city's work in that portion of Main Street?
No, sir, we've already addressed.
Or I should say adverse drainage issues?
No, there are none.
Okay.
They've been addressed.
And a follow-up, Tony, do you, do, we, I believe we have hired you to make sure that it is TDLR compliant when it's completed. Is that your intention?
That's correct, yeah. There are no inaccessibility issues that will be there once the project is complete. Part of, like, like Trey mentioned, part of the thing that you're seeing is that it's a partially constructed project. Once it is fully complete, it will be fully TDLR compliant or TASS ADA compliant. At the end of the project, there's a third-party registered accessibility specialist who will go through and inspect the whole property, provide a report that says where any violations for the accessibility standards are, and then we'll, we'll have to correct those, respond to those, that, that inspection before we close out the project. So there is a formal process that the state has that we are following to make sure that we do, at the end of the project, have a fully compliant TASS ADA project.
Okay. Did, did that help your question at all? Okay. Councilmember Rod, oh, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I, I did want to weigh in on this a little bit. It's just hard to tell from this, I'm going to, I guess I'm going to have to venture out and go down and really look and see, but it looks, now that I'm hearing that it's an incomplete, incomplete project, I have a better understanding because when I got the photos this evening, and I was looking at them, when I got the email, it looked, I mean, it looked a mess to me, and I couldn't really tell, but I, I can see that there would be some issues with it because it was a little unsightly. But knowing that it's not complete, I, I have a better understanding of what's going on. But I'm hoping that we can work with the owners and, you know, well, I'm sure Tony will make sure that we're compliant and it all works out, but it's a little unsightly right now, and it looks like there are different levels. And I had, just from my first viewing, I had some concerns, but I'm sure that, that's something that can be worked out. But I think we'll, we should definitely listen to the owners and follow the regulations and make sure that it's addressed properly.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I, well, I think it's really unsightly, myself, but I did have a question on, I understand when we did the Main Street section, we did it in different sections, you know, one section, next section. But why did we go all the way down and just do that one section all by itself way down the road? Was there, what, what was the understanding, the timeliness of that one?
So the original schedule was built around special events and several other things that were going to happen downtown. So there was, there were table in May, and there was, there was a ton of events, and we had it scheduled for that. Then we had COVID-19, and we focused really heavy in the most intense area that was going to open up for business first. That's why the schedule changed. While we were, while we had additional crews, because nobody was working due to COVID-19, we started working on this section as well to try to get ahead. Then we were asked by the property owner to cease and desist. We said, well, let's find a solution, let's talk about it, we'll be glad to meet on-site. We've asked them to do that and to please me with us by at least May 15th, because we'll be finished with the other section, and we'd like to come down and start working again. But by their letter tonight, it's like they're asking to extend that. They wish that we would go back and re-engineer the whole system. So I guess that's something we're going to need a little guidance on. But the reason for that is we, we were absolutely doubling up crews. In Austin, they were no longer working, and they were shut down and came here, and we tried to get ahead, but were asked to stop by the property owners until we could find a solution.
And I know on each section of Main Street, before you started that project, Rebecca was very diligent on having a meeting with the owners so they knew exactly what was going to happen. Did that not happen? So the owners were surprised with what they had?
We actually had multi, multiple meetings with the owners. We actually had multiple meetings on-site. They were, this, this particular property owner was requesting some, some ADA parking in the area, which we said, great, you know, we'll do that. We sat on the site, we talked about what it's going to look like. We said we will have to have an easement to make the, because for ADA parking, you have to have a parking space, a blank parking space, and another parking space for a parallel. So we would, we would have needed to encroach some, but before we got that easement, they asked us to stop working. So in order to continue doing that, we'll have to still get the easement, but, yes.
So he had a meeting with the owner and he knew it was going to be raised up that much in front of his building?
I think there was a breakdown in communication
Okay.
Because they only saw horizontal, they didn't see the vertical. And while Tony understood what that meant, not everybody can see in three dimensions, and that may have been the breakdown. But we were, they were never, we were never, the issue of the elevation was never brought up. The only thing that was ever brought to our attention back in April was the drainage. And we proved up that we addressed the drainage, and we thought we were fine. We didn't realize that it wasn't drainage until today. So we realized that it's, we just don't like it today. And I think we can find a middle ground where we can like it, still move forward, and it's aesthetically pleasing for the, for the business owner, and it's pedestrian safe. And that's, that's how I'd suggest we move forward, not stop, spend that 35% that we saved to go back and re-engineer.
And so do, do we have like a drawing from, from, let's say Pine to, to 71, so we can see what you guys planned for it to look like? I saw drawings of what Main Street was going to look like with the pop-up, but, you know, how wide the sidewalks are going to be going all the way down? Are they on both sides? You know?
So I don't have those in front of me, but yes, we have those exhibits, but they don't show you the height of the curb. It only shows a flat blue or green line on a piece of paper that says this is where there'll be flower beds, this is where there'll be a bump out, this is where there'll be sidewalk. And that's all everybody had seen because the engineering is done in the field.
So, but have we spoke with those property owners going forwards? So they realize how much of their land and things are going to be?
We have been speaking with the property owners.
And we've been moving meters, right?
And we've been moving meters. We've actually spoke to several on the opposite side of the road, and while they're not excited that their yard, which is actually right-of-way, is being filled with sidewalk and, and trees, they're, they're, they're all okay with it. And what we've got to do is relocate some irrigation and stuff like that for them, and we've worked that out all the way down.
So the sidewalk on Main Street now is 8 feet, is that correct? Right, 8, 7?
It depends on the area, but on average, in the, in the most intense area, I would say it's probably 10, 8 to 10, and farther down, it can be anywhere from 6 to 8.
And so how, how wide of a sidewalk are you planning to go from Pine to 71?
There's 13 foot of improvements, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but I believe there's six foot of sidewalk, and six to six and a half foot of sidewalk, and then another six to six and a half foot of planting strip. So you're going to, so there's
On both sides?
That's correct. So now you're looking at 13. So if you were heading south, and on your left-hand side, if you can imagine where the homes are at, just opposite 701, 600 block of Main Street, will actually be sidewalk and planting strip as well, there'll be lighting. And then as you move past Austin Street, it becomes our park cross-section, where there's only a sidewalk on one side of the road where the Ferry Park is. So there's, from Austin to Water, it's on the west side? Sorry, I had to think for a second.
Yeah, west side.
And it's on the east, there's double on the east side, there's a sidewalk on both sides on the east side, all the way up to Austin. Hope that answered your question.
But, but there should be a plan view that
We can show you that, yes.
Well, I guess what my question is being, and I totally love the wide sidewalks on Main Street, because you have pedestrians, you have retail, you have all these people. But then as you come past Pine Street, it becomes a little bit more of a residential kind of walkway, I see. You know, like if you go past Farm, you're not going to make them 10-foot sidewalks.
That's right. So this particular one, it transitions, but, so this meets our street cross-section, and we transition from a P5 to a P4, which still has commercial use, so the apothecary, Dr. Mix, that still allows sidewalk on both sides. Then we go to the park cross-section, which is only a 6 to 8 foot on the Ferry Park side. If you do not, we would not require that, but we've made improvements. I would think it would be at least six foot on past Farm.
And the other thing that's driving that, Councilmember Rogers, I just want to remind you that if this was zoned, if it had been SF7 zoning, and it had been SF7 zoning, it would have transitioned to P3 zoning on both sides, then it would have had a different, it would have had a different cross-section.
That's right.
But this is zoned commercial, and this is commercial property, so that's part of why it's driving, I, am I wrong, Tony? I mean, that's, that's part of the, the commercial property is driving the, the retailer wants to have a width of a sidewalk to have people in and out.
That's what I was
Yeah, no, I should have explained it
It's wide that way because it's zoned for P4. That's exactly what I was trying to figure out, why we were going to that wider sidewalk.
That's right. And as it, as it, as the zoning changes, as you go farther south, it gets less intense or less dense.
Perfect answer. I just, just trying to figure out why you're going that way.
No, I'm sure I did not explain it right, it's okay.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Any more questions?
So, Councilmember Peterson, do you have any questions or comments?
Just no question, but I got a comment. I'm, I'll be glad to see that project finished because during the, the Christmas Lighted Parade, I experienced some kids sitting basically out in the streets. So it'll be nice to get that area fixed up to where we can eliminate that because you're driving down through there with your headlights off, and you can just barely see, because people just come all the way out, they're going to do it. But the sidewalks will definitely help.
Sidewalks and streetlights and
benches, trees. I can also tell you, even if you look at this picture that's on the screen, I had not actually stepped onto the property owner property until today, and it really was kind of a tucked-in nook. And while this wall may not have been, you know, every, I say wall, while this increase in elevation might not have been what everybody liked, it really, I think there's enhancements we can do to make it pleasing, is my point.
So, Mayor Protem Nelson?
So to that end, what, what is our, what is our next step?
Okay, great. That's where I was going to go. I didn't, I didn't know if you had a different question. What I hear council saying is we want to, we want to be true to the project, but we also want to be respectful of this property owner and as we have been respectful of all property owners. And so at our, council, I would like to make the suggestion that we strongly encourage Mr. Adams, who wrote and submitted the letter, to meet with Assistant City Manager and with Tony, and that council, that they bring back to council, and if there's some things we can do that are no cost, council really likes those. And if we need to spend a little bit of money, there was some discussion about adding in some stairs. We also, I think, need to be crystal clear in our communication of what a finished product is going to look like, where the trees are going to go, where planters can go, if there's railing, that's an example. And, and if we have to spend a little bit of money, it's to make sure that we have, we're trying to create a Main Street that increases pedestrian participation and is an economic increase to the entire community. So council, are y'all, we, we don't have this on an item to vote on, but are we comfortable with directing the city manager that he makes sure that those meetings get arranged and that they come back at our next council meeting and let us know if there's costs associated or if we need to make a budget revision? We, we need to know where we are, but we want to do something that's reasonable to address the concerns that have been brought to our attention. Is that a fair summary?
So can I just clarify what I think I heard, so we're all on the same page?
Yes.
And then I'd like to, I think I have something to say too.
Go ahead, Doc, sorry.
Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just going to say that I agree, I mean, I think we could maybe, maybe go ahead and approve it on contingency that those issues get resolved for this particular section of the plan because
Councilmember Jackson, there's nothing to approve.
Pardon?
There's nothing to approve. We're not voting on anything tonight.
Okay, but I, I thought we were discussing not, well, okay, we're just looking at the project, not approving anything on it.
That's correct.
But before we go further, move further with the project, I mean, not approving it, but I mean, yet there's still construction work to be done, I just think we need to make sure that we, like you suggested, or someone suggested, that Tony and the city manager and the assistant city manager get together with the property owner and try to work this out and see how, show them what a completed project's going to look like. Because to me, that elevation is very troubling, and I know I can't tell what it's like without really being there, and even if it's not complete, I'm still confused, I'm not confused, but I'm still troubled by the outcome of it at this point.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Assistant City Manager, give it a go. Tell us what you think we told you.
So what I, what I heard from a policy standpoint is we want to make sure that we meet all the ADA compliance, right? We also want to make sure that we're as friendly with the property owners as we can be, so we're not going to start construction on the 15th, but we're going to bring you back some cost if we were to redesign that, that end, an estimate of what that might look like, so we can say, hey, it's going to be $300,000 of engineering, or whatever that is, so you have something to make a decision on. And then, or we come back with a solution and say we've met with the property owner on-site before then, and we're all happy. So that, what I think what I'm hearing is, don't just go out there and start working on the 15th, but work with the property owner
Correct.
And the main goal is to make sure that we maintain compliance and make the, everybody that's pre-existing happy, as much as we can.
And I think what would be helpful to have in the packet for the next council meeting is the plan view, so that Councilmember Rogers can see, and all of us can have a reminder and, and clearly see, this is where there's two sidewalks, this is where there's a meandering sidewalk, this is where the sidewalk's against a curb, just particularly it appears to be from Pine Street South. Is that a, a good, and I know those exist, and if we stick them in the packet, then that's a good reminder for everyone.
So I'd also, one more thing I'd like to bring up, and we can get off of this, and we, they are correct in some aspect, on the south end, this project originally was from Pine Street on. So if we do decide to do something, I would recommend we set aside some contingency money to address specialized issues as we move forward, not necessarily redesign, but maybe accommodate some contingency that's a lot, a lot less than 35% increase for small issues like this, to make those aesthetically pleasing things. And I'll give you that price as well.
Yeah.
I do want to make one more comment. I know that you had brought up that picture of the rail of the, of the property on Chestnut. Just re, just something to think about? You have to always think about that business owner that has to do something, and he wants his visibility. I mean, the public seeing your business is key, location, location. So the one, the rails that were put up on the corner, or right, I call it a corner, but it's the alley of Chestnut, those rails were put up street level, so they're only, you know, so high in front of that property owner's business. This one, you've raised it up, and then you're going to put the rails even higher, as you said, so the rail will also block a lot more of his building than it would if it was street level rail. So I just want you to think about that.
Yeah, no, this is a much, this is a much higher elevation than the original
Right, and then you're going to put a rail on top of that. So that's what I just want you to think about when you think about, well, just put a pretty rail. You need to realize how much more you're even blocking his
So one of the things that we discussed with Tony earlier today was those big black squares are going to be trees, and if there are spots between the two black squares where there's no meter, you could actually stair-step down, and then you wouldn't need a rail, it would be stairs.
Correct.
So that's the type of thing that, there might be a little, there could be costs associated with putting in the stairs, but then you're not putting in the rail and you're helping the visibility.
We can save money with them inside the budget.
Oh, that's fine, I just, you had said, well, we could just put in some rails. I just wanted you to remember what, what
The consequence of that rail, yeah.
Of what they're looking for.
Yeah, I think there's several options, we just need to get out there with the property owner and work them out.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Council, is there anything else you want to discuss on the update on Main Street rehabilitation project? All right, council, Councilmember Ennis, if you're in my voice, you might want to come back and join us. We're moving on to item 7B. Council, it's been an hour and a half, everybody okay? All right. Item 7B, Discussion Regarding Submission of Application for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, other known as the SAFER Grant, that would provide funding for increased staffing for the fire department chief, Rosales. He's been very excited to visit with us about this.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, we'll talk about the SAFER Grant, or otherwise known as the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. The application is due Friday at 5:00 PM, so we're coming to you just as a, kind of asking for, to meet the policy that we, y'all set in place to, to ask permission, basically. I did not provide any dollar amounts in this one. That'll all be, when we submit the budget, it'll all be a part of the budget at that point. We will not know whether we receive this grant sometime between July and September. So they give you two dates, and they don't tell you really which one. So, so sometime between July and September, we'll find out if we are awarded the grant. But essentially, I'll, I'll give a quick overview of the grant. It's a funding grant directly to fire departments, goal to comply with our National Fire Protection Association standards, which we've talked about in the past, NFPA 1710 and NFPA 1720, which addresses staffing, the response and operations of the fire department, and what standards we have to meet nationwide. And it's a, this grant is a cost match over three years, and we'll kinda talk about that. So year one, Colin?
Oh, click.
Oh, click.
Click, Colin.
Click, Colin. Year one, would be FY 2021, would the cities make 25%? And the SAFER would pay 75% of the grant. And then year two, it's another 25% for the city, and then the SAFER would be 75%. And then year three would be, the city would be 65%, and the SAFER would be the 35%. And then year four, we would have to pick up the remainder of the cost, or, as the grant will allow, you can terminate the employees at that point. But we would like to maintain the employees and continue them, so. But the program covers the cost of the salaries and benefits of firefighters. And it allows you to be able to hire new additional firefighters, or change the status from part-time to full-time. And so, that's one, that's what we would like to do, is change from part-time status to full-time status, and then add additional, so. And, and you cannot use this to replace funds. So, our current fund would have to stay the same or grow. We would not be able to take this, and I think the big word they were using was supplant. But basically, you just can't replace the funds in, in your budget. Use it somewhere else and then come back and, and put it back whenever it's your time to, to increase your budget. That's pretty much all, it's just ma, basically asking permission to apply for the grant. Again, the, the grant is due May 15th. We are already working pretty hard. We're working with a grant consultant as well, just to make sure the, the grant language and everything that we're meeting. Are there any questions?
Chief Rosales, I do wanna make sure that council's aware that I have reached out to both Chairman McCall's office and also Congressman Cloud's office, and to ask for their support. Those letters of support are helpful when we're applying for the grant. And both of them have said that they, as soon as we get it submitted, they'll be happy to provide us those letters of support. And Andreas will, Chief Rosales, sorry, Trey, see what you got me doing. Chief Rosales will address things like, when you have a whole bunch of part-time people, they, you have to have a whole bunch of equipment, and when you have full-time people, you have less amount of it. So there's some, there's some trade-offs, and the, the devil's in the details.
Correct.
But this is a way to get to full-time and allow the, someone else to help us with the piggy bank as, as we're making that transition.
Yes, it'll be a tiered step process instead of one lump sum at one time. So we'll tier step into it. And again, when we come budget time, we'll, we'll, we'll bring those figures to you. We'll show you what, what we're short to, to go from what we currently have today to the six full-time, and then, and then to grow and continue, and then show where we would like to be, where our ultimate goal is, and what the cost difference is for those. And we'll, we'll bring all that at, at a, a later budget session.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
First, congratulations on getting your new equipment.
Thank you.
I bet you're happy, I'm surprised you didn't answer to the podium. The, but I mean, this is, this is, this is consistent, you've been working on this for several years. This is consistent with one of the council priorities of enhancing public safety.
Yes.
And moving us from, from a volunteer to a full-paid fire staff. And so this is, this is going to help with that transition.
Yeah, this transition, it, to go from part-time to full-time, there's a, a lot of benefits. And, and, and again, we'll, I'll, I'll put all those, all those benefits of what the pluses and negatives are of going from part-time to full-time during the budget session. But essentially, we, at this point, we found during COVID that our part-time employees are not ours, essentially. They're, they're allocated to other departments, and, and other departments were, were restricting outside employment. And so our part-time members could not come work for us. And so it really set our pool down very, from 30, what we usually have 30 of, to maybe 10 or eight people working for us. And so if we were to have a large emergency and we needed them here, they're not, they're not available for us. And so, the, the full-time portion would be able to, they're ours. So we can call them back at any time, they can come work overtime if we need them to come in. I mean, it, it's, they're, they're now ours.
And in all fairness, if there was another pandemic, we'd be restricting them and keeping them in our town to keep us safe.
Exactly, exactly. We would be doing what the, their full-time department is doing for them now, versus us having to, to whim and, and try to, we had to go around and, and do an application period. We had to hire a bunch of part-time, which comes with cost. And so, so yeah, so the part-time and, the full-time gives us, I guess, more flexibility, I guess, when we're responding to natural disasters, the pandemic, anything that we may come at, at the city.
So to be clear, this is not your want list, this is a community need list.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and, and council, it's real important for you to know that they, he worked extremely hard while he's helping with the Joint Emergency Operations Center to get the application done in time to send it to a grant writer, to get it reviewed before they get it submitted. So it is just a really, I, I sit fairly close to him now, and I, I don't know when he sleeps.
Yeah, and I almost forgot, but we, we do, so, I know we're, we're supposed to bring a bunch of grants, but right now there are a lot of grants being thrown at fire, police, public safety departments with short closing windows. And so I'll get with the city manager, we'll have to figure out how we can present those to y'all. 90% of them are zero cost match, they're just, you apply and you get funding, or they're reimbursements. And so you just submit your.
Council, how about if we give Chief Rosales and the city manager the direction that they apply for, that we know that they will be applying for short-term grants, and that we, we're, we're aware that they need to be going after all the dollars they can find right now? Is anyone opposed to that, Councilmember Ennis?
Didn't our, didn't the way we changed those policies say that the city manager and staff are open to apply for grants? They just need to keep us apprised of which grants that they apply for?
Thank you.
So I don't think the permission was written into the policy.
Thank you, it's just more of a let us know, because we certainly don't wanna stand in the way. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Peterson, did you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am, just had a quick question or comment. I love it when you talk about grants, and I'm, I'm really, I back you 100%. But I'm thinking a few years ago, we wanted to apply for a grant for additional police officers. And it was something on the lines of that grant to where, once you get them in, you run out of funds on this grant, you have to give them a job.
Yeah, so, yes.
Have to budget it in.
Pre, previous to this, this year, this year's the SAFER Grant, Chief Lobus brought this a few years ago, and, and that it was a requirement. They have since changed that requirement. In this filing, they, you are not requ, it used to be you were required to keep them for four years, and then you were required to continue their employment after that for a set number of years. They have taken that out, and so you can, you maintain them for one, two, three, and then you can essentially let them go or reapply, and you can continue to reapply for the SAFER Grant each year. It is advisable, though, when you're, when you're applying to, that if you are doing that and you're letting people go, that your scoring to get the grant goes down. So it is, it's, it's better if you keep them, your score goes up, and then every year you can continue to apply and, and keep going. The ultimate goal is to, to meet the, the NFPA rule. So as long as you are below the, the, the standard, you can continue to apply until you reach that goal of the standard.
Hey, great, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
To use your words, we're having a lot of grants for fire and police being thrown at us. Do we have the bandwidth or the glove large enough to catch all of those that are being thrown to us? And if we don't, do you have a suggestion on what we can do to enhance your ability to respond to those grant applications?
Chief Rosales, if, if you will just look at him, the city manager's trying to save you.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Wood?
Well, I was gonna say, we're, we're gonna help him out, and, and you had a good, that's a good question. And to go off the mayor's comments from a few minutes ago, just so everyone knows, essentially, fire chief is working two full-time jobs, that's really what it amounts to. He's, he's helping run the Emergency Operations Center, and then he's also still the fire chief, and then he's got these grants he's working on. So he, he is pretty backed up, but he's very interested in these grants. But we'll get him the support that he needs to make sure that the grants can get done, yes.
Well, if you could, if you could step back, chief, step to your, to your, city manager, do we have the bandwidth to, to provide that assistance? To, to ensure that we access as many of those grants as we possibly can, especially those that do not have local match requirements?
So, so to answer your question, some of them are relatively simple. Some of them are relatively easy to submit. The ones that aren't, we can, you know, if, if they're kinda medium difficulty, we can help them with here. If they, if it turns out that it's something that we can't handle, either through the fire department or with additional staff, that nobody has time, or just beyond our expertise, we have grant consultant options that we can use to help get those done.
That, and the police department has a Sergeant, Sergeant McManus that tends to do a lot of our grants, especially for the police department, and so we can utilize Sergeant McManus as well.
And luckily, some of the questions and the, the fill-in-the-blank part are the same, so you can cut and paste some of that information from one application to another. And as most of you know, Chief Rosales is pretty good at the IT part of the, part of this, so.
All right.
Well, I, 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 I want you to know that at least there's, there's, this member of council is, is willing to, to listen to requests, to ensure that we optimize our opportunities to access those grants. And, and don't hesitate to come to, to come to council with, with those, with such a request.
We will, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief Rosales, go forth and get grants, good luck.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
All right, council, we're moving on to Item 7C, Discussion Regarding the Creation of a Strategic Plan with the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and Visit Bastrop for the City of Bastrop Recovery. Ms. Smith is going to be, gonna give us a brief presentation on this. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. I have some great news that I would like to share with you, and that is, which one? Colin, how do I click forward? There we go. Our mayor came up with a fabulous idea that she asked me to put in place in partnership with EDC and City Hall and Visit Bastrop and with the city department and Visit Bastrop. So, we've come up with, the, the idea around this Bastrop Strong that I'm gonna talk about is ways that we can have some sustainable resources for our community in the event, God forbid, of any further disasters that we may have in the future, that we have resources available to our businesses and regardless of status of business, whether sole proprietor or nonprofit or for-profit. And it's, and we build some sort of sustainable fund that grows year after year after year, so we have quick access to funds in the event we need to get that back into our community on a very quick basis. So Rebecca and Cameron and I have discussed, come up with a mission for and called this initiative, Bastrop Strong. And our mission is, is we're a community coalition that provides recovery resources for organizations impacted by the disasters within the city of Bastrop. This coalition will be fundraising for monies to be in this fund. We will also be working with businesses, asking them to consider putting in a line item in their budget each year to fund this, to build this fund, and hopefully making it more sustainable. So what we're looking to do is, the EDC has said that they have financial contributions that they would like for us to be able to give out, and I believe, Trey, you're gonna, we're gonna talk about the resources that the city may have, and that EDC will match whatever resources the city will present to us for this, this new grants, financial grants, if you will. The grants will be distributed by, and reviewed by Cameron, myself, and Rebecca. We have modeled the application form to be almost identical to EDC's current application form, with the exception of we are allowing nonprofits and sole, sole proprietors. We have built a website, it's BastropStrong.com, it is not live. We wanted to share this with you and get your approval. So we're very excited about this, we think it's going to be really great for the future. And again, hoping that we don't have to use the funds, but we would be building these year after year after year, so we had access to funds and grants quickly if we need to get them back into the community.
So, council, this came to be because, you know, when you, whenever there's a disaster, you have to start planning for the recovery. And I mentioned in my mayor's report that the EDC, they, they have put money right back into the businesses, and so we've, we've already done that. But when we were talking about recovery, one of the things that came up right away is EDC legally cannot give money to nonprofits. That's, that's not who has donated to it, they are, they are not allowed to do that. So there would be an umbrella of Bastrop Strong, and EDC's contribution would be spent on things that it can legally spend EDC-type money on, and the city's contribution, whatever it is, is money that would be available for nonprofits. So there'd sort of be two buckets under a bigger umbrella. And like she was saying, that we might ask for businesses to make donations. We certainly won't be asking that now.
No.
I mean, that's, this, this is a long-term, what are some steps that you can put in place? That there's a rainy day fund, so there's funds available. And we wanna be, make, make sure that we don't get, it, it, it is not a slush fund, it is not a political fund, it is a, somebody has problems, we, we have a declared disaster. That's one of the things that they were talking about, is that this fund wouldn't even be triggered possibly unless there was some sort of a council disaster that was proclaimed. And we're, they are working through, how do you put in enough rules that it has reasonable restrictions, but that it's not so restrictive that you've defeated the purpose because it, it, it takes too long to be able to give somebody some money? So at this point, it's really just sort of a gee, what do, the reason it's not on for approval, it's a, does anyone philosophically have a problem with putting something like this together? Because the three of them are working through, and they will be working with our city attorney to make sure that we're dotting i's and crossing t's and keeping everything legal. But if you guys are like, nope, we don't wanna be in that business, then there's no point in moving forward. So this, the point of tonight was to just get some feedback in general of the idea. One of the things that I was concerned about was I'm being positive and looking forward to, what if we funded it, even if it was, you know, 10 or $15,000 a year, and we didn't have emergencies for a really long time, and it got to be this huge amount of money? And, and people told me that I wasn't very good historian, because we generally don't go 10 years without emergencies, but it is an item that would be funded every year. So if you didn't have the emergencies, if we couldn't afford it that year, you just wouldn't fund it that year. But whatever you fund, it would be money that would be available, so that's, that's kind of the point. Councilmember Ennis?
So just for clarification's sake, you, you've identified, or y'all have identified, holes in our ability to assist folks.
Yes, sir.
And this is an effort to close those, those holes?
Yes, sir, that is a great way to describe it.
Exactly.
And, and the second question, which I think you've already answered by saying you got a lot of work to do, who, who is going to be the, who are gonna be the folks that decide who gets the money?
Yep, that's.
At this point, it would be myself, Cameron, and Rebecca, or actually the city manager, Robert, I believe.
But they, part of the paperwork that they will bring back to us, and we kinda talked about, maybe council would say, yes, it is now ti, you know, there's been a flood, there's been a COVID virus, we want you to tap this fund for this amount, we think we've got X amount of money in it, we want you to come up with the people who, the right place to spend a certain portion of it, and we might put some parameters around it, and then turn it over to a community coalition of some sort that had an application process that followed the law and then would decide on those. But I think they're still working through those details, that that's gonna be some work, and there was no point in doing it if we weren't interested.
My only concerns are transparency and accountability.
Absolutely, well put, well put. So, council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I also wanna make sure there's some clear, concise criteria, so there's realistic expectations on, on this. To be clear, is this just going to be relegated to grants? Or is there also gonna be low-interest loans that'll be involved?
At this point, we're doing just grants.
That the, that is my understanding as well. BEDC and those of you who have served on BEDC, sometimes those loans and collecting that money back, and if you're in an emergency, the idea of a loan is one more burden. And so that doesn't mean that that can't be changed and that council can't consider it, but during an emergency, I think some folks would rather be handed $300 than handed paperwork to get a $1,000 loan that they have three years to pay back, and then we're trying to chase it. There's some staff time and just some logistics that become an issue.
That's what I was hoping it'd be. And I would ask one thing, just, I don't know why this is a point of me, rather than saying me, you, and Rebecca are gonna be making the decisions, I would prefer to have it positions as, as opposed to the individuals.
Okay, yes, sir, that's actually right, that's exactly what we discussed.
Not that I don't think the world of you, but I just, I wanna make sure we're real clear.
We actually did discuss the positions, and you're right, that's what it would, we had decided on.
Thank you.
So council, everybody, Councilmember Jackson, are you okay with this?
I think it's an excellent idea, and it will fill the gap that we have in helping our community and that are impacted by disasters, so I'm in favor of it, it looks good.
Great. One of the things they talked about, I, I really like their little logo with, with downtown Bastrop, and they were saying, like, some of the fundraisers, maybe at some events, it could be, if somebody wants a koozie or a T-shirt that says that, and then that's money that could go into the fund as well. And, you know, and it could be, I support Bastrop Strong, and, and another way of doing that. So, kinda some cool ideas. All right, so nothing to vote on there, and. And Ms. Smith gets... It's almost as if it was planned, Council. We're going to Item 8A. Receive and discuss quarterly report from Visit Bastrop and discuss future funding for this organization from fiscal year 2020. And for all of these items in 8, and I know we've got folks that are standing by on the phone, Council, you have all of the slides, and the intention tonight was to not have each of these organizations go through every single one of their slides. Councilmember Peterson appears to be quite happy about that. It was really, they wanted to make themselves available if you had any specific questions for them. Visit Bastrop is different than our other organizations because of the way that they are funded. And the Item 8G is one where Ms. Waldron may want to be visiting about the funding for Visit Bastrop as well. But so with that, Susan, I didn't know if there was a few slides you wanted to go through, or if you were just wanted to entertain questions, or how you wanted to do that.
I think there's just maybe one or two slides that I would probably highlight the most, and...
So we have to say click, click, click to Colin until we get to where you are?
Click to number three, Colin, please. So that's our sales that we had in the first quarter of this year. And I just wanted to point out one really important number here, and that's the number of booked business. So we booked 19 pieces of business in January, February, and March. The economic impact to the area is $2.2 million, which exceeds our funding that... or investment that we have from the city already. So we're really proud of that number, and we just really want everybody to understand that that's a really important number to book 19 pieces of business in just three months' time.
I want to compliment you on that. Having been in the business, I understand how much work that takes, but a great, great goal you've hit.
Thank you.
Along with the... You may be getting to this, but along with the definite assist for the Hyatt.
Exactly. The definite assist for the Hyatt, that was a big one. 900 room nights, and what was the definite assist? Over $650,000 in economic impact. The other one thing I just want to mention about this slide is we have only lost one lead to COVID-19 that has been booked for anything booked for the future or any definite business. Everything else, our director of sales has been working very diligently and was able to successfully rebook every bit of business that we had on the books other than one piece of business.
Congratulations.
So that's really a great accomplishment for her. And then, oops, Colin, can we go to... Just quickly, can we go to the Slide 23?
You just made Mr. Peterson happy. Just keep...
Social media Q2. It's orange. So what I want to talk about when we get to this slide, basically, is that we had... When we moved out of our Q2 marketing efforts, and we moved into updating our marketing efforts more towards a community base, more... We wanted to do our marketing in a more mindful way, other than, we don't want to bring in visitors immediately right now. But what we want to do is make sure that we remain top of mind in visitors as they're planning. The surveys that are out there right now are really impressive. They do change day to day, but they're always going in the right direction in terms of the number of people that plan on traveling, want to travel. And one of the hashtags we'll be using this summer is hashtag #roadtripsummer. So we are encouraging folks to come in, or we will, at the appropriate time, to consider taking a road... Coming in, taking a road trip. Camps, campgrounds, RVs, all are really top of mind right now for a lot of travelers. So we are adjusting our marketing efforts in a very mindful way to make sure that our visitors know that we are prepared, we are safe, and when the time is right, we welcome you back.
Sounds like a great strategy.
And if you don't have any other questions?
Any other questions? So Susan can leave. Ms. Waldron, would you come talk about funding for Visit Bastrop? No, no. I'm going to let her talk, and then you can hear that part of the conversation, so.
Yeah, so as we talked about about a month ago, we wanted to just bring it to the forefront that we understand that our hot funds is going to be impacted by COVID. And so we have done some preliminary analysis of the fund, and we've put in some projections of what we think revenue might be. Just like with sales tax, I can't be held accountable for any kind of projections. No, but we're trying to be conservative, so we can look at it holistically. And so, you know, in relation to the Visit Bastrop contract, we do pay out quarterly. So we have paid out three quarters already. So that's almost $970,000. When we look at our projections for the revenue, we're seeing that there might be around $135,000 shortfall. So basically, we would have overpaid them by the time we got to the end of the fiscal year and true up. So we did want to have that conversation with you. And, you know, in my staff report, I kind of laid out some, you know, need a little direction on what you would like to do as far as... We do have several months before our fourth quarter would be due to them. So each month that goes by, we're getting a better idea of what that tax revenue is going to look like. So we have some time to kind of continue to update and look at that. But we also looked at all of the funds, all of the departments that are funded within that hot tax fund, and made some projections there as well. So I have been able to step out and say that, based on our fund balance policy, we are still in good shape with our fund balance, even with our projections. You know, but the question is, do we pay out Visit Bastrop their fourth quarter and true up later, which means they're probably going to have to give us money back? Or, you know, do we wait till the end of the year and see how the revenue falls out?
Councilmember Ennis?
I think a lot of this also has to do... I mean, before we would make a decision on that, I'd like to know what Ms. Smith has done with her organization to maybe meet us. Is that something you could do?
Yes.
Susan? I mean, we're kind of... We're like you. We're kind of hitting in the dark without knowing what effect it's going to have on Visit Bastrop. I mean, we'd love to give her what we've kind of earmarked for Visit Bastrop. But if she's already made, paid just $100,000 in cuts, then maybe we can meet her halfway.
Right. And their contract is driven by and calculated based on the revenue that we bring in. And so that's why there's always a true-up after the fiscal year.
Well, and Council, if you indulge me, I believe these hot funds, as opposed to sales tax, where we didn't see a significant drop in March sales tax, there is no question that there is going to be a significant drop in these hot funds.
We've already seen. You'll see later in my report.
Yeah. So for me personally, the idea of writing a check, that then they're writing a check back to be in compliance with the contract seems kind of silly, because that is the contractual obligation. That is different, and I know we're on Item 8G. For the other organizations, they don't have that type of contract. We made an annual commitment. And so it would seem to me we should make the fourth quarter payment for them, with them understanding, you get the fourth quarter payment, but we don't know what the next fiscal year is going to be, because we won't know how much hot funds we've collected and what the forecast looks like. So with Ms. Smith, if we don't make the fourth quarter payment, because there's no point in giving it to you for you to give it right back to us, if we don't make the payment to them when we come to the budget point, we'll be at, okay... To your point, Councilmember Ennis, maybe it's a... You should write us a check for $70,000, but we're going to forgive that or roll that into the next one, as opposed to... So that you can plan for what next year looks like. We'll be able to have that continuous conversation, because we know it's going to go down significantly, and we know contractually, they have a true-up process to do. So I don't... It seems like we're just digging a really deep hole if we were to make a fourth quarter. So it's kind of, you're not going to get it, but we'll make sure that we're whole, and we'll try... We can have conversations later about whether it comes out of reserve, and maybe they have a little reserve, we have a little reserve. Do we all give up a little bit? So one option is, Visit Bastrop, you need to plan on, you've pretty well gotten contractually what your year's going to look like, and we'll talk to you about next year, next year. And for the other ones, we're going to give you the fourth quarter. You need to spend it very carefully, because that may very well be your first quarter payment into the next year. Councilmember Ennis?
When do we have to decide this?
Well, I mean, if we're talking...
When will you write fourth quarter checks?
Right, yeah.
When do you write that?
July 1st, we would be paying them out their fourth quarter. So we will have more information by then, so we can continue to look at how the revenue's coming in. But we know the Hyde is closed, and that is huge. I mean, if the Hyatt stores are closed until June 1st, we know we are going to take ahead.
So, Councilmember Ennis, I would like to re-ask a question and maybe get... Give Ms. Smith an opportunity. If we did not make the fourth quarter payment to you, and you were living within the contractual obligation, which we feel like we're very close to now, is there an adverse impact to your organization? I believe that's what you were asking, Councilmember Ennis.
Basically, that's where I'm going. I know you and I have talked, and I know you've made some significant reorganization and some changes to
In anticipation.
to your operations in order to meet this challenge. And that's why I'm kind of looking for what kind of effect is...
So immediately, when we realized what was going on with COVID-19, we went into a reaction mode. And part of our reaction mode was looking at our budget, looking at our resources, looking at everything that we have. And my recommendation to the Board of... My Board of Directors, and based on the information from Tracy, who we've been talking regularly, is that we do forego that last quarter payment. We feel that that is the best way to move forward. We don't want to get in a situation where we're being funded here and then having this huge lump sum to have to pay back. The other reason that that works well for us is under this new way that we are marketing, community marketing and mindful marketing. That is a lot of organic marketing that can be created within the walls of Visit Bastrop. So we've done some restructuring there. We still are using Augustine for some digital outreach. We're still using our website. But we've done some restructuring so that we will be fine for the last quarter and be ready to go full guns October 1st. And we do have some reserves. At this point, we have a combination of some operating revenues and our reserves will get us very gracefully through the end of the year.
Hats off. Hats off. That's the way you run an organization?
That gives us a lot more to work with. Thank you.
But I'll be back October 1st.
Well, and I was going to say, so then... So for the financial officer, I hear us saying, we are not going to be making a payment to Visit Bastrop in fourth quarter. Our intention is to make the payments on July 1st for the other organizations. And then when we review the budget, we can have a conversation about how much of their reserves do they go into, if, and how much of our reserves we go into. And the beauty of an August-September conversation is we will have so much more information than we have on May 12th.
Yeah, and I just also want to just say for everyone who's listening that we will continue to work the mission that we're working, which is to be an economic impact, an economic driver for this community, and continue to bring visitors in. We just want to do it in a very mindful, helpful way, and just do the right thing for the area.
Fantastic. Thanks to you, your staff, your board. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett, for being here tonight. Council, any other comments or questions? Just great job.
Okay.
Really great job.
Thank you.
All right, we're going on to Item 8B. Colin's going to help us see Terry. She's going to... We'll see if we can see her on screen. And for all of these next ones, again, we have the presentation. So Council, if you have any questions on the Y, or... Terry, if there... Terry, Ms. Moore. If there are a couple of things that you really want to highlight, we would certainly give you an opportunity to do that if there's just a couple of points you want to really bring to attention. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Moore? Okay, Ms. Moore, got a couple highlights for us?
Well, first, let me say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all and the support you guys have given us for the last eight, nine years. If you saw the very first slide, you saw where we were the first three months. 72% over our 19 numbers. And then it was like the fire hose turned off and there's not a drip. What I will tell you is that we have retained some... Our membership, about 55% of our membership. People are still supporting the organization and looking forward to opening up. We will open in limited services on June 1st. We will open the gym. We will offer limited group exercise classes, as well as lap swim and some aquatic fitness programs at the pool. It is going to be a phase in to make sure that all of our staff, our members, and everybody is protected. And it's going to be a pretty extensive phase in. All of our programs are going to move forward as they're able, and we'll follow all of this, obviously, the CDC guidelines and the rules of the state and the city and the county, so.
Great. Councilmember Ennis?
I had the pleasure of having a guided tour by Ms. Moore not too long ago of all of the facilities at the Y. And I'm here to say, if you're not a member or you haven't gone down there yourself and seen the facilities and all they have to offer, you really need to do it. It's wonderful for our city.
Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you.
Terry, I just wanted to make a comment of how impressed I was during the stay home on the Y, putting so much out there on social media, keeping people active. You had all these classes. People... You always had something up for them to see. So I wanted to just... That was just huge kudos, keeping people emotionally upbeat when they're home, stuck home. So I think that was a great job of the Y to do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
A lot of people... And I will share that, because we've got some really great people working across the association. So thank you for that.
Great. Great job. All right, Council, we're moving on to 8C. Receive and discuss a quarterly report from Lost Pines Art Center. Bye, Terry. And now we're going to get to see Patricia, I think. Hi, Patricia. Okay, you know the drill. I'm going to ask Council if they have any questions, and then we'll let you do just a couple quick highlights. Council, any questions for Patricia? All right, Patricia, why don't you share a couple highlights with us?
Well, we started out 2020, we had this great 2020 vision, and then it just started unraveling come mid-March with the COVID. You know, usually the spring is our busiest time, but we haven't stopped doing anything. We've closed our doors, unfortunately, and we're looking to have our plan to reopen, because we've got people that are excited, asking us, you know, is First Friday starting? How are we going to stand six feet apart? But we're working on that, as well as... Right now, it's in the transition. So the one thing about COVID was, you know, Art Institute is moving in, and, you know, we were able to make arrangements and get them moved in. You know, working with them, we've got, you know, program going on with Visit Bastrop with the Christmas ornaments, so you'll see stuff about that soon. You know, in the Veterans Healing Arts Program, we're working on that. So our staff is actively, you know, pursuing these, as well as, you know, trying to stay on the minds of the community with our social media, our virtual shows. And we're working to have kind of a new normal of... Once we get back to the, you know, activities at the art center, what can we do differently, or what can we... at the art center, what can we do differently, or what can we add? And what we're looking at is possibility of online classes and, and things like that, just to, you know, keep on the minds of the community. And we found that one thing that everybody, being stuck at home, they're looking for activities. So that's why we're, we're making sure that we give, you know, that relief, that activity's out there. So we're just moving forward and looking at what, you know, what the new changes will be. We've got the Art Institute coming in, we've got, you know, some additional programs that maybe we didn't think about before that we're exploring.
Thank you. Patricia, I'm sure you're glad to hear that you'll be getting your fourth quarter payment.
Yeah, I was glad to hear that.
And when you put together your budget for next year, just know that there's, there's going to be less to go around. So you'll be needing to really scrub what you ask for, and make sure that when you get that fourth quarter payment, that you're very judicious with every dime you spend, would be my advice.
Absolutely.
Counsel, any questions for Patricia? Thank you so much. Best of luck. I really appreciated your last slide, because we know that Bastrop, we can face large, enormous challenges, and we know how to pull together. I really, thank you very much for your last slide. It was, that was nice.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye, Patricia. All right, Lisa, I guess we'll see Lisa next. Colin, you are doing outstanding. There she is. Okay, we're moving on to item 8D. Receive and discuss quarterly report from Bastrop Opera House. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Holcomb? Ms. Holcomb, want to hit some highlights?
Sure. Well, you know, we had to go dark, cancel the last weekend of one of our shows, and pretty much cancel the rest of our season. But we've still been very busy. I have been fortunate enough to stay very in touch with what's going on with different theaters throughout Texas and throughout the United States. I've been asked to be on several different panels over the last few weeks to discuss the best and the safest way for theaters to, to ease into opening, so that we're, we stay safe, and our patrons stay safe, and that they feel comfortable coming in. We have several different scenarios as to how this can happen, and how we'll be reopening. With the first scenario, starting with the possibility of something happening in July. And if that doesn't happen, then it would be the end of August. So, so we're still planning, trying to move forward. We just aren't quite sure yet when that can happen. So we're just having to play that by ear and see which scenario we can take.
Well, I sure enjoyed your pictures. I went to both of the plays that, or two of the three things that you featured, and you guys just always do such an excellent job. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Holcomb? I assume you're also equally happy to know you will be getting your fourth quarter payment, and you understand that we'll all be having to look long and hard at budgets for next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Sapikas. Well, bye, Ms. Holcomb. We'll get to see Kay pretty quick. Did you say maybe? I saw her earlier.
Is there a mic on?
She's got her mic on.
Hold on.
Hold on. Oh, she, she might, oh, did you put down the adult beverage? Is that what was going on there?
I was waiting for Colin. I was waiting for Colin, so.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Sapikas before she gives us a couple highlights? All right, Ms. Sapikas, give us some highlights.
Okay, well, we closed, we were, again, having a stellar couple first months, and then, like others, just everything turned out. Gloria is working right now, doing some research around possibly opening and what that might look like. And we'll know more in the next week or so. She's talked to La Grange Visitor Center, which are, they're fully open. I don't think we would go there right off. But anyway, that's exciting. Hopefully we can do that in the near future. We are going to do another exhibit in July, a special exhibit, which will be on architecture in Bastrop. And I get to do some reading and catch up on all that stuff that I haven't been able to do. And we're also trying to figure out a way to really document this event, because COVID will be historic.
Absolutely.
And just to ensure that all those stories are told. So that's, that's been fun, working with Carol and Tracy and, and others who want to do that. So that's all I have. And thank you for the fourth quarter payment.
Well, I, I know I-
And I will be very frugal, I promise.
Well, and I know I speak for Counsel that part of why it's, it's easy to give you guys, these organizations, the fourth quarter payment, is that we know that you will be extremely careful with those dollars, and you guys are running such excellent organizations. I believe-
So if we are careful, can we take some of it with us into the next year?
We will absolutely be having those discussions. Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilmember Jackson, I think you wanted to say something?
Right. I just wanted to say that I love the idea of actually historically getting the information together about COVID, because it will be historic. And I think what a great idea for the museum and for the visitor center to document that, so that we can have it for generations to come. And that's an excellent project, and I applaud you for being, having that foresight to do that.
Thank you.
All right, great job. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate your time. All right, our last update is from the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center. Is Ms. Danielson? There she is. Hi, Ms. Danielson.
Hi, everyone.
All right, you want to give us a couple quick highlights?
Well, like everyone else, I'm sure you could see from the PowerPoint presentation, our second quarter, you know, up 29% in revenue, which is phenomenal. Over last year, when we were up even probably more last year, even with taking a loss of almost $5,000 the last two weeks in March. So what we've done in the last several weeks is reschedule all of those events that we've had to rebook on into the latter part of this year. Some of the annual events, obviously, have just gone on over to 2021. We're like a lot of the other organizations, we are waiting to find out what our new normal's going to be at the convention center. And it's all, all over the place. I mean, are we going to open? And our tables have to be six feet apart, and only six people at a table? Is that going to cut our occupancy down? Instead of being able to have 800 people in here, are we going to be able to have 400 people in here? So we're sitting, waiting. I'm on every webinar there is to be on, within the meeting industry, within the convention venue management industry. I'm on the phone daily with directors of use across the state, just brainstorming, networking. We have already purchased new freestanding sanitizing stations that we know that we're going to have to have. All of the new cleaning procedures that, you know, were in place before. We would have the facility cleaned for you, and you would have your event, and then we would clean afterwards. Now, knowing that we will be cleaning every 30 minutes, we will be. So we're just waiting to see what our new normal's going to be. Very happy to report, though, all of our clients are anxiously waiting to come back and to be here and have their events here. So we're just going to stay positive and just thankful for the rest of the community, working very close with Susan Smith and Cherry Kay over at Visit Bastrop and their staff. Very grateful for that partnership with them as well. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Danielson. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Just a comment, Kathy. Thank you for the application. We can't use this year, but we'll definitely use it in the future. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
All right, Ms. Danielson, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, we have, we're on the top of page three. We've already taken care of 8G, or have we not?
Sure.
We think we've covered it, but Ms. Waldron has one more thing.
No, you really have. And, and because the amount for the fourth quarter was fairly nominal, you know, I think the decision was made to just do the fourth quarter. The only question I was going to say is, when I reach out to them for them to start turning in their budget requests for fiscal 2021, one of the things we're going to request from them is, you know, what does your funding look like coming out of '20? And let us know how much money you think that you will be rolling over to the next year. And that's going to kind of help us, you know, make some of those decisions.
Are we allowed to let them roll it over to next year, or is there laws that we're not involved with that they have to comply with?
I think I'll, I'll have to look at their contract, but I know, obviously, that y'all would be able to make an action to, you know, override the contract, but.
Yeah, Mayor, Counsel, I'm not aware of any other laws-
Okay.
-that govern this. I think what Ms. Waldron is saying is correct, that it's the contract that comes with those allocations that govern it. And if we have to make, you know, minor addendums to those, we can.
Okay. So as we told all of them, you're getting fourth quarter, but be very judicious with it, because that, we, we know, without anything else, we know there will not be as much money available for next year, period. We, we know that. So we just all need to be in the super save mode. Okay, yes. And Ms. Waldron, any, anything that you add to, questions to their applications that give Counsel better information to make better decisions, I know will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And I know you'll work on that with the city manager. Counsel, do we need to take a bathroom break? Are we okay? Okay, it is 8:52, and we are going to take a five-minute, or however long it takes for us to do this safely recess. It is 8:52, and we're in recess. We think five or 10 minutes. All right, we got everybody back. Colin, are we good? All right, it is 9:57. That was exactly five minutes. Yay. 9:57, and we are back in regular session. Counsel, we are on item number nine. We have citizens' comments. I believe that you will notice they have a theme this evening. So I've got several, and Mayor Protem Nelson, I believe all of them will, I can read in less than the three minutes, but I am doing the citizen comments. And thank you once again, citizens that have been so great about complying with getting them turned in and writing, and being able to let Counsel hear your voice and your concerns, so that we can make the appropriate decisions. The first comment is from Cheryl Lee. She is at eight, she lives at 801 Laurel Street here in Bastrop. "I want to thank both Counsel and other officials for everything that is being done to stop the spread of COVID in our communities and county. I would especially like to highlight and recognize Saigon Nails for the excellent precautions they have taken to keep their customers safe and reduce the risk of spread in their establishment. They are doing appointments only to reduce and limit the amount of customers in the business at one time. Masks are required for entry, and everyone wears a mask during the services provided. They have set up plastic barriers at each station separating the nail technician and customers while still providing excellent service. Each station has hand sanitizer, and after every customer, they disinfect the seats and table before the next. While I am not quite ready to pack into restaurants and other businesses, my nails are considered essential in my life, and I am grateful for the efforts of Saigon, and they should be recognized for their efforts. I hope that other businesses are being just as cautious. Kudo, Saigon Nails. Everyone, please stay he, stay safe and stay healthy." She wrote this at 11:18 PM, Monday night, and they were able to open on Friday. So I, thank you, Ms. Lee, for, for the kind words about the business. The next comment comes from Danny Moss. She lives at 1706 Wilson Street. "I would like to address the City Council on putting speed bumps or putting additional stop signs on Wilson Street to slow down the traffic. We would like them placed on Wilson and Elm to create a three-way stop and one on the railroad crossing. We have over 1,000 cars a day going down our street at various speeds, and not many are going 30 miles an hour. And the police will not pull them over unless they are going 40 miles per hour, so that is really our speed limit. There is not a stop sign between Linden and Cedar, and that is almost 3/4 of a mile, and they think of this road as a speedway at all hours of the day. We have children playing bicycles, walkers, runners, and folks walking their pets with cars racing by. I've called the police chief and the former city manager and got no response. I've talked to sergeants and taken videos of the car racing down our road, and no response. We have placed signs, which were removed, shouted to slow down and makes them speed up, or use their own sign language. We deserve to feel safe on our streets, not by crime, but by the speeding cars who will often, will not move over when we are walking. Pecan, Main, and Carter have the same issues, and we want this addressed. We have all been complaining for years about this, and the traffic will not go away, because we are growing and many subdivisions are being built. It is time to slow them down." The next comment, and, and you'll, I know they did it, social distancing, but there are several comments on Wilson Street, so I'm, I'm not ignoring Ms. Moss, but I'm, I'm going to keep going.
Who was that from, Mayor? I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was, that was from.
Danny Moss. The last one I read was from Danny Moss. This one is from Tanya Fleming. Tanya lives at 1701 Wilson Street. "To the Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, with regard to the speeding on Wilson Street, please consider reducing the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Also, a possible solution to slow people down on this residential street that occupies many families with small children, please consider installing a three-way stop sign at the Wilson and Elm Street intersection. Thank you in advance for your consideration. My prayer is no child has to die while riding bike or walking down to Fisherman's Park to play on the playground or in the water park before this dangerous situation is addressed." And that was Ms. Fleming. The next comment is from Alexandra Swan at 1809 Wilson Street. "I am writing you in order to address the problems and unsafe conditions that arise from the constant speeding and inattention of motorists on Wilson Street. Due to the fact that there aren't safe pedestrian walkways or sidewalks, myself and my family members and any other person who desires to walk down Wilson Street are faced with cars consistently going too fast and/or not looking out for pedestrians. My husband and I do not feel safe walking our 20-month-old daughter or our dog down Wilson Street, especially not at night, especially not on Friday and Saturday nights, when drivers are often coming home from bars, speeding, and not looking at the road. We have had to jump onto the grass and push our dog out of the way in order to avoid a collision while walking. We most certainly do not feel safe pushing a stroller, especially at night, because we would have, not have time to leap onto the grass if a car were to swerve into our direction, as has happened far too many times in our eight years of living in our house. Wilson Street has a lot of traffic. Approximately 1,000 cars per day are estimated to pass by my home, and this number is only expected to grow. We would like to see the implantation of speed bumps or possibly stop signs put in the railroad tracks and at the intersection of Elm Street. This would prevent cars from speeding down Wilson with reckless abandon, as can be seen on a daily basis. Our street should be safe for us to be able to walk our animals and take our children for strolls. We witnessed a car hit the gas and fly over the railroad tracks, swerve out of control in front of our house, and land in the neighbor's yard, where they collided with one of the construction worker's vehicles that was parked on the lot, not even on the street. Had my daughter been playing in the yard, she would have been hit. We are so tired of constantly watching cars racing down the street. We would like to see more patrol cars, speed bumps, and/or other measures implemented in order to make Wilson Street a much safer place for pedestrian cyclists." Was that three minutes? "...and just people who want to be in front of their yards. Since sidewalks are non-existent, we are forced to walk on the sides of a very unsafe street. As, I think, as summer approaches, we begin to walk our dog after the sun goes down, and this is especially difficult when motorists have been out drinking or on their phones and are speeding. Please address this so we can feel safe walking down our street." The next one is from Robert Rivas and Yi Zhu, who- The next one is from Robert Rivas and Yi Zhu, who live at 1610 Wilson Street. "To whom it may concern, this letter is a concern about the speed on our street, Wilson Street. We would like to see some improvements in the way of speed bumps or stop signs. Out of the 1,000 or so cars that travel our road daily, a lot of them push around 40 miles per hour with the current posted limit of 30 miles per hour. The stopping distance of 40 miles per hour is around nine-car lengths. If we could reduce the posted speed to 25 miles per hour, we could see distances of around four cars. From what we have learned about the speed bumps in Austin, they have been reduced to eight feet, so, eight feet, so that ambulances can straddle them. In addition to these thoughts or suggestions for the safety of our families and animals, would be the installation of stop signs at Elm and/or the railroad tracks. Thank you so much for your time, and stay safe." The next person is Robin Payson. I hope I'm saying these right. Robin Payson at 1704 Wilson. "Dear Mayor and Council Members, I appreciate this opportunity to address the council this evening. I've been a resident in the city of Bastrop for the last 32 years and love our town, but I would like to bring the council's attention to the problem of speeding on Wilson Street. Our town is growing, and the Bastrop Police report that a traffic survey from over a year ago showed that almost 1,000 cars go by my house every day, and that will only increase as KB Home Development adds new houses to a neighborhood already significantly impacted by an increase in traffic through our residential streets. The speed limit on Wilson Street is 30 miles an hour. Police officers tell us they typically don't issue a speeding ticket unless someone is going 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. Many drivers exceed 40 miles an hour on Wilson, and that is far too safe, too fast to be safe. At 40 miles an hour, it takes nine-car lengths to stop. We have families with children in the area, and this speed is not acceptable. With no speed bumps or stop signs, drivers from Cedar Street and literal, drivers turn from Cedar Street and little, literally race towards the railroad tracks, accelerating as they go. I request the city lower the speed limit to 25 miles per hour and place speed bumps along Wilson to help slow the rate of speed used by most drivers on Wilson Street like a raceway. Last year, someone driving down Wilson hit two cars parked in front of my house in broad daylight, and both cars were totaled. She was driving too fast. That was damaged property, but next could be an injured person. Please take action now. Thank you for your time." This is Ashley Henson at 1605 Wilson Street. "As an effort to discourage traffic speeding violations on Wilson Street, I would like to propose the installment of a stop sign at the corner of Wilson and Elm. I witness vehicles recklessly driving above the posted speed limit on a daily basis. My husband and I decided to relocate to Bastrop from Austin over a year ago because we felt it was the best place to raise our family. As a mother and as a member of the community, I am extremely concerned that the issue of speeding vehicles could truly cause harm. I ask the council to please consider proactively addressing the issue and to implement a solution before an accident occurs." The last citizen comment is Joshua Bingaman at 502 Elm Street. "To whom it may concern, we want to address the city council about the speeding on Wilson Street. We want a three-way stop on Elm and Wilson, and stop signs or speed bumps at the railroad tracks. We have an average of 1,000 cars a day on our street with no reduction of that due to the growth of our town. It's not just young people who speed down our road, it's older people and city trucks as well. There is not a stop sign between Linden and Cedar, which is almost three-quarters of a mile. Danny Moss has called the mayor, city manager, and police chief. She has also taken photos to the police station to show who is speeding. We have lots of kids and pets on our road. The kids and adults, for that matter, ride their bikes, jog, walk, and enjoy the outside. Children's toys and balls often roll into the road where cars speed by. If 30 miles per hour is the speed limit and a child runs into the street chasing friends, a pet, or a ball, there is no way an automobile can stop in time. The police officers are only stopping them if they go over 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. Does 40 miles per hour seem reasonable? We think not." What if it was your children riding their bikes in the road, where 1,000 cars driving between 30 and 40 miles per hour or more? When you're walking your dog, they speed by, so it's dangerous. One, it's just seems so, one, it just seems so much more safe and sensible to lower the speed limit so that anything over 35 miles per hour, you would get pulled over. As a street of neighbors, we have complained for years, and as the area grows, traffic will only get worse. We want this issue addressed now, as more families and children move into our street, and more people will be outside than ever. A few more facts that we've discussed with local police and city management. We, we were informed that speed bumps were removed in Austin. The only speed bumps removed in Austin are on Jester Boulevard. They, city is actually installing them more on streets, and the cost is $3,000 to $4,000. When driving 40 miles per hour, it takes nine-car lengths to stop. When driving 25 miles per hour, it takes three-car lengths to stop. Please work on this issue now, so we're not dealing with it when someone is injured or killed." That is all of our citizen comments. Council, you know that we cannot vote or discuss an item because it has not been posted, but I do believe we are well within our jurisdiction to suggest to the city manager that he bring back at our next council meeting a plan to address the issue that's been brought tonight, and if the city manager felt so inclined to put down traffic counters and get some additional information, make a recommendation, look, I think that council would be happy to entertain that on a few, on the next council agenda. So we are at the consent agenda. The item on the consent agenda is consider action to approve city council minutes from the April 28, 2020, regular meeting. So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Anis.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We are moving on to item 11A, consider action and adopt on first and final reading, ordinance number 2020-12, as an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regard to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety. Council, in the packet, the only order that I have signed since the last time we met was the one that you guys knew I was going to sign, which was opening the library. It is item number 3B. I have already signed it, and thanks to Attorney Borquez, it is worded such that as the library director wants to make additional recommendations, we can do that without us having to, the, she and the city manager can do that without us having to continually update the emergency order as it is written. So, but before we have a vote on that, we have a request of something to, to consider, and I also want to just kind of give you a general update on the, on the situation at hand, and that is that I was on a conference call with Governor Abbott yesterday, and I sent you guys the letter from Governor Abbott, and I sent you some information about the CRF funding breakdown. I have already read the terms and conditions, printed out the forms, signed the forms. I was willing to turn in the forms, but the chief financial officer, I think she wanted to do it so she knew that it was done, so she did take care of that. Though, the long and short of this is the CARES Act money that the nation did was a really, really big number. Of that number, Texas received $11.24 billion with a B, billion dollars. Out of that $11.24 billion, there were 18 jurisdictions that got direct money. So it is from the internal, from the Treasury Department directly to them, and it was counties and cities that were over $500,000, which we know we are not in a county or a city that is like that. So there's some funky stuff, which doesn't matter to us, that like if you're in a county that has more than $500,000, but your city doesn't, then you have to negotiate with the county to get some money. There are also some instances where there are cities that are over $500,000, but the unincorporated areas of the county are not, and the county is having to negotiate with the city to get some of the money. We do not have to worry about any of that. We, Bastrop County, there, the, the formula is $55 per person, and so the city of Bastrop, our allocation potential, the most that it can be, is $506,605. With the documentation that I signed and sent in, and I kind of did it without your permission in advance, because I knew that you would be okay with us getting a check for $101,321, and the way that it works, there are rules that we have to follow to, that we're allowed to spend that money, but one of the items, and one of the reasons I felt completely safe doing that, is that things like Chief Rosales's salary between March 1 and the end of December, that is eligible for this, for these funds. Chief Nagy has spent a considerable amount of time at the emergency operations center, so we've got staff time that can be covered. It will cover FMLA that people have needed, so there's, Tracy is going through the list of what the expenses are that the city's had. Also, those BEDC COVID grants that I talked about, those are also eligible. So there is a, there is a point that BEDC could be given money back to their budget, and that could be either additional COVID grants to go out for a third round, or it could help make their budget whole. So, because sometimes the conversation becomes, well, you got to get to a certain threshold, and there's certain requirements, and you, you got to pay for it first, and it's only 20%, and, and if you don't get to the threshold, you can't turn it in. This money, although it's following, keep it, you got to have every receipt and, and all the documentation has to be there, the rules around the money are a little bit different. And so I know for a fact that if the city had spent not one single dime, if Ms. Waldron couldn't come up with anything out of a city budget, the BEDC budget of $400,000 would take care of most of that money. So I have explained to BEDC that they are not first in line, and that there is no guarantee that they will get a big chunk of that money, but there will be a discussion about how that money gets taken care of. So I wanted to make you aware of that. We have done all of the steps that we can do right now, and Tracy and Mr. Wood are working together on pulling together those costs, and then at our next council meeting, they may come to us. If they have more things on the list, then we have money that's there if, if they need input from us on priorities, because some of them, some of it is funds that will be expended by December. An example was if you have to improve your computer systems because, you know, with the Zoom, and we've done Ring, and we may need additional storage. Colin says some of these long council meetings really take up a big chunk of video. All of that stuff is eligible, so there are some funds that have already been expended that we would apply towards this, and some that we might expend. One of the requirements is that we have to have written and spent that money before the end of this calendar year. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I've also...
Madam Mayor, what was that figure again?
Oh, sorry. Our figure is $506,605. With the paperwork that I turned in, we should, in short order, get a $101,321 check. And I have signed my life away that, that every receipt we turn in for the $101,321 will be within the terms and conditions of that money. They have made it extremely clear, and Governor Abbott reiterated a number of times, he did not make the rules of how this money can be spent, and if you do not follow the rules of how this money will be spent, the Treasury Department of the United States will come recoup said money that was not spent correctly. He, he wanted it to be very clear that he's not involved in that. They were involved in how to spread out the money that was left from, after they gave it out to each of the jurisdictions that had $500,000. So there were 242 counties out of the 254 that are a part of the jurisdiction and filling out the paperwork to get the money, just like we did. So that, that was, I had sent you that information in advance, but I wanted the community to be aware of that, that we've done what we can to get that money. And then we also have, we have three people that have signed up for comments. I, I know you guys know this, but I want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. Currently, our public buildings are still closed to the general public. We conduct meetings, if you had, we are still taking deliveries, but it's not just an open door all of the time. We have opened the library to curbside, and they'll be taking additional steps as, as they can comply, and if, if you guys confirm that emergency order that I've signed. I signed, and you guys have already confirmed, that the trails at each of our parks, the trails are open, and the boat ramps are open. All of the other facilities within the parks remain closed, like bathrooms and playgrounds. So, and those all opened on May 8, which was just last Friday, so we're, we're fairly new into, into this next step. I have three, they're all fairly short, three comments. The first one is from Jennifer Franks. Jennifer Franks lives at 1242 Highway 71 West. "Please reconsider opening the Bark Park. Those of us whose dogs rely on that space for their mental and physical health understand that choosing to go and take our dogs would be a choice we have to consider carefully. We would be responsible for whatever might happen, just as we are already taking responsibility for the actions of our dogs while there. Going to that park would be far less of an exposure risk than going to the grocery store out to eat or to shop. We would be outdoors and socially distanced humans..." The humans, she wrote in parentheses, humans. "We would not be in a crowded indoor facility with frequently touched items that are never cleaned between each and every customer. In capital letters, please let us make the decision to go or not. Please stop taking measures to take away the right to independently make that decision for ourselves." The next comment is from Chance Bishop, who lives at 1306 Main Street. "Please open the Dog Park. CDC states the virus does not survive on metal in the sun. The one park that is by the police station can be monitored easily." And the last comment is from Colin Hamilton, who lives at 1242 Highway 71, number 410. "Dear Councilmembers, I am not only disappointed in your decision to not open the Dog Park, but I am shocked at the illogical statements that you made before weighing in decision. But what is far worse is the fact that you are turning our great town into a communist community and not trying to follow the leadership of the governor. I hope that you will look deeper at the facts of the spread of this feared virus, then I hope you will go into your hearts and recognize that this country has been built on our freedoms and our rights, and this park is one that is very important to me and my household." So those three comments are wanting the Dog Park to be opened, and I wanted to share with you because I wanted to make sure I had the latest information. I went to the CDC guidelines tonight when I sat down for the council meeting, and if you have pets, it says, "Treat your pets as you would other human family members. Do not let pets interact with people or animals outside the household. If a person inside the household becomes sick, isolate that person from everyone else, including pets." So I, I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page, and I want to put before council if anyone is interested in, in opening the Dog Park. Colin, we can't see Councilmember Jackson.
No, I'm not interested in that, but if, if no one else is, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept this resolution or this ordinance, excuse me.
I have a motion that we accept the ordinance which is approving emergency order 3B to open the library. I believe that's your motion, correct, Councilmember Jackson?
Ordinance number 2020-12, yes.
Yeah, that's the ordinance that's associated with the emergency order 3B.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second, but we can have conversation now that there's a motion. Councilmember Rogers, did you want to comment on the Dog Park? I was just going to make the comment that, that I agree with us leaving it closed with what you just read. I mean, we can only...
I mean, we can only follow the health guidelines that were given at this point, so I agree. Leaving it closed at this point.
Counsel, this is a standing item on the agenda, and I know that we will revisit it at every council meeting. I know there was some concerns. We opened parks on, on May 8th, and there were a lot of people out there. And at our emergency operation meeting this morning, the comment was made that we saw a rise in cases two weeks after Easter Sunday, and we are hoping to not see a rise two weeks after Mother's Day weekend. So I think there's something to be said for taking slow diligent steps. Is there any further comments or discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ennis, did you have a comment? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, so ordinance number 2020-12 is approved. Mr. Wood, was there any additional information that you wanted to give on COVID? Did we cover everything?
There it goes. I think you covered everything. The only thing I might add, Mayor, just to, just to give everyone a summary of where we're at right now, if you, if people have seen the dashboard-
Thank you.
-do you want to cover that, or do you want me to go ahead and-
I, I had called it up and forgot. We are currently at 116 confirmed cases with 32 recovered and two deaths in, within those are Bastrop County numbers. I also want to bring to your attention that I think it's about 10 days ago, there is now toggle switches where you can either see the cases by zip code or see the cases by jurisdiction. Because some people were saying like, well, for instance, the, as of tonight, there are 61 cases in the unincorporated area, and that's a really big area, and people wanted to know where those cases were. So you can toggle over to cases by zip code, and it breaks them all out by zip code. And even for like 78602, it shows that there's two in the city, and 17 in the zip code 78602 that is not in the city. So there, there is additional information out there. Thank you very much, Mr. Wood, that was a good one.
Well, and what, and what you mentioned, I think you kind of said it in passing, but two of the, there's two positive cases in Bastrop, the city of Bastrop.
In the city of Bastrop.
And those have been there almost since the beginning. That number hasn't changed in quite a while.
And I, if it goes up tomorrow, it is all on you. I have not said out loud, because I didn't want to jinx, that we were staying at 2. City of Smithville is at 8, City of Elgin is at 45, and I just didn't, I haven't even said it out loud to my husband, because I didn't want to jinx us, but, but it, it's there for everyone to see, that is the facts. It's, it's been 2 for a very long time, and let's all continue to, to be safe and be safe for our, our friends and our community. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. All right, moving on, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Wood?
It's related to this item, but back to the census, just to, to get the information out there. The original deadline was June 14th for the self-reporting, which is the part we're talking about now, where you, you do the self-report. It's been extended because of the COVID issue to August 14th. But I think it looks like after the June 14th date, they may still move ahead with the second phase, which is where they start coming to knock on your door, to collect the information, but they've extended the deadline for self-reporting up through August 14th.
So because of the COVID virus, that deadline has been extended to August 14th, but the best thing to do is go ahead and get it done, so we can see the percentages go up and get that, you can get that off your list. I think several of us are cleaning out closets and drawers, and that's one more piece of paper you can take care of. Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Thank you, counsel. We'll be moving on to item 11B. Consider action to approve resolution number R2020-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving task order number PW2020-01 to 304 Construction for Concrete Ribbon Curbing Construction for the North Main Project, including Maple Street from North Main Street to Pecan Street, Magnolia Street from North Main Street to Pecan Street, Locust Street from North Main Street to Pecan Street, and Water Street from Maple Street to Locust Street. In the amount of $141,875 attached as Exhibit A, priced according to the bid proposal sheet attached as Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for appealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'll make this quick. If, if, you may not remember, but just a few years ago, we actually awarded a contract for, I'm sorry, let me advance this lineup. Colin, you were doing an excellent job, and I am slacking.
Oh, there was the picture. That was, that was what I forgot. There we are, social distancing, they took it with the drone, so that's the Emergency Operations Center. You can see Andreas with his hands on his hips saying, "If you people would get done, I have a lot of work to do." All right.
Click, that's right. So what I have is a location map, and if you remember, we were awarded a, a, a grant to make improvements to the water, or to the wastewater in this area. We also made improvement to water. Well, turns out, when you dig up all the streets to make water improvement and wastewater improvement-
You dig up all the streets.
-there's not much street left. So we also had in our schedule in this year's budget to improve those streets. We went back and looked through our, our, we have a contract with, with 304 Construction currently to pour sidewalks, to pour curb, to pour laydown curb, but we don't have a price for is ribbon curb, so we had to make that change. So what we did was we bid ribbon curb specific for this job, and you can see, if you're familiar with the area, here's Highway 95, that's Meskeet. And here we have Magnolia, Locust, Maple, all right here in the north end of town. And what we will do is lay the ribbon curb, come in and rework the base, and then put the street in. So there'll be, all the drainage improvements will be done, the sewer, the water, and this is the last piece. And once we get this awarded, we can start work on the street.
And there's sidewalks or no sidewalks?
There are no sidewalks, which there's not enough room, this is 30 foot of right away.
Okay. I, I knew there'd be a question, so I thought I'd put it out there.
So to be clear, thi- this is a task order to an existing contract? Because we didn't have to go out for, for bids on this one?
We did go out for bids, we did in RFQ and everything, yes.
Okay, so this, this is fun, this is-
Yes, this is a new contract, specific to ribbon curb.
I, I read task order, and I wanted to make sure that it was a separate one.
I think they got a bid for ribbon curb, and this is the first task to put this ribbon curb down, and then they may use it.
That's my question, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have a question.
Councilmember Jackson?
Right. Didn't we, or did, I'm trying to see if it was past council, present, or in between or somewhere, wasn't there a, a proposal to add sidewalks to some of these areas, or is this just part of the project, and sidewalks will follow later? For that area?
This is a separate project, but there will be sidewalk, it's actually just a little bit south of this neighborhood, along Main Street, because there is, there is currently sidewalk on Main Street near this, where this specific area is at. But yes, that's a separate contract, and we have that on the schedule. Let me rephrase that. We have that in this year's budget, and we will, we are actually going to meet with our contractor to start work on that very soon.
So the sidewalk project was about continuity to get from park to park?
That's correct.
And, and this specific area, it's where the utilities have been done, and the right away is so small, there's not enough room for sidewalks. So it's kind of, the sidewalks are on the collector and not on the smaller streets. Is that-
That is, yes, that's a great way to say it.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Mayor, I appreciate it. I was just, I couldn't remember, it's been a while.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Counsel, any questions or a motion? I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, yay, let's get those folks taken care of. They have put up with construction for a long time, they'll be happy to have it all taken care of.
Yes, you're right.
Counsel, we're, counsel, we're moving on to item 11C. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-02 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to amend Article 4.04 Peddlers, Solicitors, and Vendor, and adopt Division 4 requirements applicable for mobile food vendors in Bastrop, Texas Code of Ordinances, providing for findings of fact, purpose, adoption, and amendment, repealer, severability, enforcement, and effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So if you recall, we've talked about this quite a bit. We talked about it again at, we talked about it at the last council meeting as well, which this was actually going to move to consent, but we had a lot of discussion on the fees, so I thought we would take the time to address this very quickly. I actually put some fees in your packet. I had a misunderstanding, and I have another chart for you on this PowerPoint for us to discuss. And once we establish those fees, I think everything, all the changes that we've previously went over, stay the same, we will just simply make a, an amendment to the fee schedule.
Can, can Councilmember Jackson see the new fees?
He will be able to, yes.
No, they're not on the screen yet.
Okay, Colin's working on it.
Okay, but they were, they're, they're going to be on a separate fee amendment, I mean, they're not going to be in the ordinance as such, because we have an ordinance specifically for fees, correct?
This ordinance is doing things in two different places.
It's amending the section where the fees are at as well.
So we would be adopting the fees tonight?
Okay, because I was thinking that, since we had that separate section for fees, I thought it would cover all city fees, but these are going to be exempted from that.
No. The, what we're, what we're doing is amending the ordinance, and we're amending the part, a different section of the ordinance about fees, and adding these fees there, so that we still stick with, there's one place where all the fees are, and there's a different ordinance for the, for this. So with this one motion, we're changing things in two places.
Okay, okay, now, I, I think you're saying what I was trying to say, but okay, I, I think I got what you're doing.
I, I didn't want you to think that we're, I didn't want you to think we're going to be coming back with a fee vote later. This, this is the vote.
Okay.
That's right, it amends both sections, or it amends that section of the ordinance. So Colin's going to put this up on the screen so you can see it. You can move forward, Colin, we're gonna actually, let's just go straight to the fees. I think we're all pretty familiar with the rest. There we go, that's the original proposed fees that you saw in last, the last packet. So, and we had quite a bit of discussion about the monthly, the weekly, the daily, how we would manage that, and what I put in your packet, I'll just say click, so Colin can move forward one more. Right, so what we have, so what I'm going to propose tonight, actually, is this set of fees, and make an amendment. So, and what we did was, we spread them out, they're over a six-month period. We do have, we still have a, for, let's just start with section one, how about we do that, so we don't get confused. So first, section one is where we'd be at a food court setting with a mobile food vendor, which is what we all agreed, that, our council consensus, we wanted to encourage a destination spot. We think we do this with the fees. For six months, it'd be $400, and for a year, annual permit, it will be $600.
It's kind of like an apartment building, because somebody else has done the grease traps and the restrooms out. What you're doing is pay, you may have a deal with the person who owns the food court, you're getting permitted so that we know that the truck you move in is compliant.
That's correct. And it's, and it's, it's very close to what it takes for us to do the inspection, make sure things are there, and things of that nature.
Mr. Jobe, the, so the packet that we had, the, the, the chart that we have in our packet is different from the-
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, so I, so, just so you're aware, I put in that chart, and it should have been this one. Yeah. So, but this is what I, this is what I would propose. Actually, if we go to the section two, where the accessory to primary, which is, this is the example of the folks that are in the Walmart parking lot, or things of that nature, so they still have restrooms, or the, the Walmart, for example, is connected to city utilities, but they're only there for a short period of time, they may leave at the end of the day, they may stay for a longer period, but they have a permit that is for six months, or they have a permit that is done annually, and we've set those fees at $1,300 and $2,400 for the year. So, and what that fee does, because there's no property value improvement while they're there, this allows them to pay in and not compete with your current brick and mortar, which was really a concern of the council. Sorry. And the third category is the truly temporary people that are just here for a small, short amount of time. So what they can do is, for ice cream truck, for example, if you wanted to drive around, sell ice cream, and you want to do it over the weekend for a three-day permit, it's $350. If you want to be licensed for the entire quarter, it's $1,200. You get a three-month permit, you'd be able to drive anywhere you want in the city and sell things, and that's $1,200. That's the proposal. That's $4,800 a year, which is equivalent to what the majority of businesses pay in property tax here in the city.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilmember Rogers, we're all looking at you.
No, ma'am, only I, I met with Trey and went over this, and, and I think this is a, this is a good proposal, going towards the people that have to normally pay rent, a business that pays rent on every time, is there all the time, and I think this makes it fair business for both, both parties, so I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Counsel, any comments or questions?
I, I do. I, I really appreciate the, the questioning of Councilmember Rogers on this, and as much as I appreciate Mr. Jobe taking the time to respond to those questions in a very clarifying manner, I, I just, I had to read it for two or three times, but I really appreciate the dialogue that, that was involved in that process, it gave me a greater understanding.
I, I want to share how impressed I was that, Congress, that you also made sure, like, don't do it monthly, do it every three days.
Yeah, that's right.
Tried to make sure that we weren't collecting money from the fee, so that we were spending it for staff to follow up on it. I just, you had a very logical approach, and really appreciate the time that you spent on it.
I just had one more. Trey, I'd, I'd asked you if you had a comparison to what other cities were trying, did you happen to find that?
So I did. We went back and looked, and they're all different.
Well, yeah, we're all different, but-
So when I, when I spoke with some folks at Sand Marcus, we talked about, the permit itself for the truck is about $200, $300. Now, there is also site prep fee, there's also review of the site, so it ends up being several different fees, so it was really hard to give you a, hey, it's only $200, because they're just, it's more than that. The fire department has to look at it, they have to look at your site, there's lots of inspections, so you would end up paying something equivalent.
So you think roundabout, we're still all within the same categories they would if they went to other towns?
We just do it in a lump sum instead of, instead of nickel and diming you.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Excellent, counsel, and Colin, I'm sorry, I'm making you crazy, but I can't see Councilmember Jackson. So I have a motion and a second, if there's any further comments?
Mayor?
Sorry.
I've got one minor question about the wording, if, if Colin can put it back on. It's a really minor issue, but I, I think it might work better on the wording on the very last fee to say three months, and quarterly almost implies that it's a fixed three, I think most people are going to think that might be Q1, or Q2, or Q3.
Oh, three months, three days or three months?
Right, right.
Instead of first quarter, second quarter, or third quarter?
Right. Thanks for mine.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from Councilmember Ennis, are you all right with that modification?
I'm good with whatever he thinks works the best.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Wood. All right, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Y'all, we're going to do a round of applause, that was painful, and we've worked on it a long. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Rogers, and Mr. Trobe, Mr. Trobe, that's Trey Jobe, Mr. Trobe. Mr. Jobe, thank you, you and your staff, for all the work that you put into it, I really appreciate it, we've been talking about it for a long, long time. Counsel, it is 9:44, and we are going into executive session. The item is 12A. City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of property and easements associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three. It is 9:44, and we are in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 10:16, and we are back in regular session. Out of our executive session, we are on item number 13. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. I believe we have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the resolution determining a public need and necessity to acquire 5.660 acres for wastewater treatment plant number three, and authorizing the city attorney to engage in continued negotiations and initiate eminent domain as necessary. attorney to engage in continued negotiations and initiate eminent domain as necessary.
I second that.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Rogers, is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you, counsel, and we are now on item number 14. Councilmember Peterson?
Motion to adjourn.
It is 10:17, and we are adjourned.